Good evening, everybody. I wanted to welcome you this evening to our town council meeting of May 1st. And Rebecca, may I ask you to please do roll call?
Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Vice Mayor First.
Here.
Mayor Condon.
Here. Okay, thank you. And if you'll all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to report out from our last meeting of closed session that there is nothing to report. Now it is open time for public comment. That is, if anyone here would like to speak to anything they wish, as long as it's not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes, and we invite anyone up here who would like to speak to please step Dr. Bundy?
Bob Bundy, Mariner Cove. I'm speaking on behalf of Tag Hanson this evening, who has really been the big advocate for banning gas-powered leaf blowers in Corder Madera for many years now, and he's enlisted me in the effort. And I just wanted to thank Todd Cusmano and the council for bringing this forward a couple of months ago on the public agenda where it was discussed. And I also want to thank you for doing the survey, which I hope everybody has filled out, that is going to provide more insight into what the community really wants and would like to have in regard to that. And so Tag and I look forward to it coming back on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Stollier, Casa Buena Drive, not about Casa Buena Drive. I just wanted to say thank you for everybody's support, the council's support, the staff's support, everybody's support in getting the age-friendly intergenerational center launched yesterday, or Sunday. And it was a wonderful experience, and I hope everybody takes advantage of the center. Thanks.
Thank you. It really was gratifying. It was amazing. If you weren't there, the turnout that we had far exceeded our expectations. We've started our classes already. Tomorrow is drawing and watercolors. And I went to the first class on Monday. I was going to bring it, but then I thought, no, that's bragging. I can't draw a stick figure. John McCormick taught everybody how to draw a sphere, an apple, an orange, whatever you want to make out of this round ball, that you can't believe when you're done that you did it. So for anybody here or out in TV land who has always thought it would be wonderful to be an artist, but they can't draw, by all means, come to this class. It is incredible what he teaches you to do, and it's a lot of fun to boot. So all of the classes are good. They're all looking very successful. And so I do hope that you will all do it. We will try to get more outreach with our program. So most of you got the little postcards in the mail, but sometimes they end up in our cylindrical file. And so we'll keep that, try to keep that going between Rebecca's newsletter and the reader board, whatever we can do to continue the outreach and make this a real successful effort. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our next item on the agenda. And Peter, will you start us off, please?
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of the council, it is a bittersweet day for the Public Works Engineering Department, and that is because we're losing Kelly Crowe, Senior Civil Engineer, who's been with us for just over three years. I have only had the pleasure of the last five months to work with Kelly, but I have worked with him more closely than anyone on staff over those last five months. And I just wanted to share with you a little bit about my experience. Kelly is very sharp. He's committed. He is strong at working independently, and he knows how to speak his mind. And one of the things I appreciate about him is his willingness to question me and my judgment. And I think that serves him well in his ability to do that, especially since, as you all know and I'll announce it for anyone in the audience or on TV that doesn't know, he will be the new city engineer for the town of Key West, Florida. So that is a big job and a big accomplishment for him to achieve. So as you all know, we want to appreciate Kelly tonight and thank him for his service. And I just wanted to reiterate again that, you know, it's a loss for the town. His institutional knowledge, his work ethic will be missed. On an auxiliary note, before I turn the mic over to Todd, I also have a positive announcement in that I have secured two new Senior Civil Engineers. One will start on Monday of next week, named Jared Berio. He is a structural engineer as well as a PE, and he's going to bring 10 years of experience to our town. He's coming down from Santa Rosa. As well as RJ Sukoe, who has been with the county doing very similar work to what we do here in Corder Madera. So they have big shoes to fill. It's going to take two bodies to replace what Kelly's been doing, and we have high expectations for them. But really, you know, Kelly's been amazing for us, and we wish him well as his move to South Florida is imminent.
I just wanted to echo Peter's comments. I've been here now 18 months, and we've gone through a lot of transition on the side of Public Works Engineering. And Kelly was always the rock, and he was always there for me, both personally and professionally. And I just appreciate the heck out of you. You're good people and very difficult to replace. You don't replace someone like Kelly. What he's meant to our town over the past two to three years on our flood infrastructure and his work with the Flood Board, that's him. He did that. He's a big reason why we have a large discount on flood insurance. That's the work of Kelly. And so I'm going to miss you, but I'm so proud of you and happy for you. I wish you the best. You deserve all of everything that comes your way. And I just want to tell you that, you know, we have issues here, and we've talked about it with flood control and sea level rise, but you're going to Florida, my friend, and so you've got to go through tornado alley. And then, you know, they have hurricanes over there, so you need to wear your helmet, okay? And I want you to be safe, you know, take care, and I wish you the best. Thanks for everything.
Okay, thanks, Todd. And from a personal point of view, Kelly, I'm really sick about this whole thing, but I know that you've really got a terrific job. And there's supposed to be nothing like the Key West sunsets, but you're going to be really missed. I mean, this was, I always felt home for you, and so you're going to have a new home, but I hope it's, you know, you will return, but at least keep in touch. And I just wish you all the best. I know that it's a really terrific move, a promotion that you really well deserve, and I hope it meets your expectations. We're going to miss you. So I would like to read to you commendation. Whereas Kelly Crowe began his career with the town of Corder Madera as an Associate Civil Engineer on March 30th, 2015, and his integrity, hard work, and commitment to the town earned him a promotion to Senior Civil Engineer on April 10th, 2017. And whereas Kelly has consistently demonstrated a high level of fiscal prudence through conscientious budget management and thorough review of project cost estimates, which has benefited the town with significant cost savings and increased productivity on several occasions. And whereas during his tenure, Kelly completed numerous infrastructure improvement projects involving road pavement maintenance and storm drainage system upgrades. He served as the staff liaison to the Flood Control Board, and for a period of several months, he single-handedly managed the Public Works Engineering Department while maintaining his project workload. And whereas Kelly's knowledge of the town's infrastructure, in particular, the flood control facilities and system resulted in successful completion of FEMA's five-year verification visit in 2017 that resulted in the town receiving a Class VII rating under the FEMA Community Rating System, which, among other benefits, has enabled town residents in the flood plain to receive a 15% premium discount on flood insurance. So many people are grateful to you for that. And whereas Kelly has expressed particular pride in his involvement with the recent FEMA flood map change and his efforts to help correct errors in the map, that to date has resulted in nearly 40 residences being removed from erroneous inclusion in the flood plain. Now, therefore, the Town Council of the town of Corder Madera does hereby commend Kelly Crowe and expresses its appreciation for his contributions to the town of Corder Madera, presented May 1st, 2018, in Corder Madera, signed by me, the mayor. And I know that all the sentiment is with me together in presenting this commendation. And I'd like to present.
All right. So Kelly, we'll ask you to say a few words, and I'm going to bring you a gift that is from town, town staff. And one thing I'm sure that, they can claim sunsets, they can claim beaches and oceans and whatever else, they cannot claim wine like California has. So we have some California wine for you to take with you.
That's a really good point. Thank you. Mayor Condon, councilmembers, the biggest thing I take away from all of this and the commendation is, you know, thanks. I really do appreciate it. It means a lot to me, and I'll definitely cherish this moment for the rest of my career and the rest of my life. In addition to the thanks for the commendation, I just want to say I've had a great time working with the rest of the staff. I really think there's a great staff working for the town of Corder Madera, and most of all, when you come to work, you want to enjoy being where you are and enjoying the people that you work with. And I definitely enjoy, you know, some of the building and planning staff that are here today. You know, it's been real fun working with you guys, and it is a heavy heart, where I have a heavy heart moving on, but, you know, this opportunity came up, and I decided to go for it. Just working throughout the town and working with the council throughout the years, you know, I've learned a lot. This was my first public job. I rapidly started to understand the complexities involved. And bottom line, it's really understanding what the citizens want and listening to them and understanding. I think I've really improved in, you know, understanding and listening to the residents. One other thing is working with the Flood Board. I enjoyed working with Dr. Bundy, who's in the audience tonight, and the rest of Flood Board members. It's been eye-opening, the amount of things that we've been able to take on, and they've really encouraged me to keep projects going and sometimes challenged me to do more. And I definitely took that challenge and, you know, wanted to excel at that. You know, in somewhat of a closing statement, there's one thing that I remember from former Councilman Lappert, and I've taken this throughout, you know, from when I heard it.
I'm so scared.
It's PG. It's PG. No, but it caused me to think, and, you know, throughout my tenure in Corder Madera, I've always thought this in the back of my mind, but, you know, he asked, he just asked open, you know, I think it was something with the Parks and Rec, there was some food truck event that was going to happen, and he just asked, "How's this going to benefit Corder Madera?" And it was simple as that, just how's it going to benefit Corder Madera? I kept that with me throughout my career here, and I think that's just such a poignant thing to keep in the back of your mind, is, you know, we're serving the town. That's what we do, and, you know, ultimately, how's it going to benefit Corder Madera? Just finally, I'd like to thank my wife, Jerry, who's in the audience tonight. She's supported me throughout my whole career and especially my time here at Corder Madera, you know, understanding the need to go to late meetings and, you know, letting her know I might not be back, you know, this calendar day, or however late the meeting goes, and, you know, the line of Flood Board meetings. But I look forward to our adventure, and I love her a lot, and she's been great. So with that, just want to say thank you again, and I appreciate everything you guys did for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a great meeting.
Do we get to go drink the wine now?
Oh, golly. And now, Adam, you have a presentation for us?
I do, but that is a very difficult act to follow. My goodness, I don't have, it's not as emotional, but I do want to say on behalf of all of us, and I'm sure we've expressed this in our internal meetings, but we're obviously going to miss Kelly a great deal as well. He's been great to work with, and we wish him all the luck as well from the Planning and Building Department and all of us individually. So I'm really, I just, this is, I'm happy to be here tonight with the rest of our Planning and Building staff. You ruined it, because I didn't ask them to all sit in the same row, but I was very impressed that they did that. But in any case, I know you get to see some of us on a fairly regular basis, probably more often than you'd like, depending on the subject that we have in front of you. But it's really a great chance for you to see our entire team, with the exception of Doug Bush, who's not able to make it this evening. And I'm really happy to be able to share with you some of our work that we've done over the last year and some of the things we hope to accomplish in the upcoming year. For starters, I just wanted to note that last year, at least for me, I think was a milestone in that it was the first year since I've been here that we've had continuity in personnel for an entire year, which is a great thing. As you know, it can be hard to have people coming in and out as a staff, and I think we've seen some significant benefits associated with that continuity. I think there's an understanding over time of how best to work with each other. We all have our individual qualities and different skills, but we have a common purpose, and I think we're really seeing that now, some of that gel into making things happen, again, for the betterment of the town. And I agree, that is a poignant statement. So you may not be aware, but I am the wily veteran of this group at almost four years in June with the town of Corder Madera.
I didn't realize that.
And frankly, I think I'm becoming one of the longest-tenured staff members, you know, in any department. So it's something that I, I take great pride in that, but it speaks to quite a bit of the transition. But I think it's great that we have our entire staff in place, and it's been here now more than, you know, a year and a half, and I look forward to working with all of them over the coming years. And I do, I take pride in being here for almost four years, but also take pride in our team. They frankly do all the difficult work for our department. We have a group of professionals. They're truly passionate about the future, the physical development of the town, whether it's ensuring that we make sure that what gets built is safe and of high quality, or thinking about policies that address sort of the ever-changing environment and community needs. I think at our core, we really enjoy just being surrounded by plans, whether it's two-by-fours, I don't know, or just thinking about the future. And despite, I think we pretend that we don't at times, and things can sort of, you know, the day-to-day stuff can kind of come at you a little bit strong sometimes, but I think at the core, we all are in this because that's what we like to do. At the same time, we have a group that's skilled at solving problems, and I think perhaps most importantly, excel with working, excel at working with people, oftentimes, I think, under difficult circumstances and under difficult conditions, and it's hard to find. And I think serving our community, as Kelly mentioned, is something that we continually keep close in our minds at all times. So I should finally introduce them, I guess, in no particular order. I'll start Pam Miller is our full-time contract code enforcement officer slash building inspector slash just complaint resolver. I think we've gone to her on many an occasion to help us with issues that come in, and Brian will speak to some of those a little bit later. Phil Boyle, our senior planner, who you know quite well. Bob Haggott, our part-time building inspector, who we throw as much work at, to you as we can, keep you busy. Amir Sofar, permit technician. And Tracy Hegarty, customer service representative, and much more. And Brian Fenty, our building official. Doug Bush, as I mentioned, was not able to make it tonight, but you know him well as well. So I wanted to quickly highlight some of our work over the last year on the Planning Department side. Brian's going to give a little bit of that summary on the building side of things. And so for the Planning Department, I kind of want to point out that we, since the beginning of 2017, we had about 165 applications come in and submitted to the Planning Department that needs to get reviewed and processed and evaluated and ultimately approved or denied or noticed, and there's a lot of activity with that. Only about 45 of those applications, or about 27% actually go to the Planning Commission, and only about 10, I counted since 2017, or about 6% go to the Town Council, although, you know, you guys get to deal with the tough stuff, though, I will say that. So the point being, there's a lot of other applications that are going on at a staff level that we're reviewing, significant number of tree permits and home occupancy permits and staff-level design reviews where there's level, some development going on and expansion, and usually of a single-story expansion of a house or so on, but about 30 of those each year. And, you know, signed permits, banners you've seen, daycare permits, accessory dwelling unit permits, a wide variety of things. We also serve more than 2,300 visitors at our counter last year. And I think, I haven't been able to do this, I'd love to be able to add up all the email responses that we've written, all the phone calls and follow-ups we've performed with, responding to, a wide variety of community members. I don't have that number, but I'd estimate it over 10,000 a year. And so some of the projects in the last year, you, just to highlight a couple of them, I think importantly, Tam Ridge Apartments obviously opened last fall, and I think a lot of that is owed to Brian Fenty, who expertly, I think, guided that to completion. The RH Gallery gravel lot project received entitlements, and including the Planning Commission just approved last week, the amendments to the design, which included putting the restaurant on the top of the roof of the RH Gallery. And that was really, to a great extent, the result of Phil's stewardship through the process of that application. We made some significant strides in some longstanding code enforcement issues in cases that have dogged, I think, certain neighborhoods and certain residents for a long time, and that's thanks in great part to Pam's, I wrote "dogged determination," so I'm doing that. I used that twice in one sentence. I was pretty proud of that, I think. I don't know. And finally, I just wanted to highlight some of the work we've collectively been doing to improve information and tools we provide the public. So with Lorena's help, is Lorena here? And Lorena's not here, but she, I did want to say thank you to Lorena. On the Planning, the Planning Department did meet, and we worked with Lorena and developed several new graphic tools. I've provided some handouts for you on the dyes, really designed to help the public understand our internal processes and answer some of the most frequently asked questions. And we've added them as a public resource to our town's website. We've really tried to improve the amount of information, the amount of useful information on our website and in different ways that certain people may understand it better through a graphic such as these flow charts, and put them on our website and really update that information regularly. Speaking of, I was going to, oh, is this the wrong, this is not the presentation? Yeah, sorry, that's not a presentation. Anyways, I was going to go on to the website and show you some of those tools, but I provided you some handouts. We've also have some additional, we've updated sort of the zoning maps. We've updated all of our project webpages for major development projects, so you can see updated information regarding the latest building plans for Amy's, for example, is on there. But some of these, I think, are just resources that we're trying to provide our customers and our community members. I think one of the big goals in this, for this upcoming year, is to continue to implement projects really aimed at improving customer service. We just closed a customer satisfaction survey that we hope will provide some insights into what areas we should target for improvement, and this really should be valuable for all departments. And as you'll hear later, and you'll, we feel strongly that a new permit tracking software system will not only benefit staff and increase our own efficiency, but will have tremendous benefits for our customers and the public and the community who will be able to access a significant amount of information and do more things without actually having to come into our office downstairs. So that's something you'll hear about a little bit later from Tracy and Brian. Some other major projects that we'll be looking at in this year include the Amy's project, which Doug will be bringing forward to the Planning Commission on May 8th, I guess, next Tuesday. The Robin Drive Residential Project, the Budget Inn, is still around and will be coming back for entitlements. And then on the policy side, we'll be working on cannabis regulations, hotel zoning, and we'll continue our work regarding view guidelines as well. And I fully expect we'll be working to address new housing legislation, as always, that's an ever-changing landscape. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brian, who can supplement some of this on the Building Department side.
Evening, Mayor Condon and councilmembers. As Adam mentioned, we've been pretty busy this year, and of course, one of our more visible responsibilities is the issuing of building permits for construction. But what many people don't realize is the extensive amount of work that takes place before and after the permits are issued. In 2017, we issued some 673 building permits with a total construction valuation over $44 million. Those numbers represent a 16% increase from the year before as far as permits goes and a 30% increase as far as the construction value. And that doesn't even include the Enclave condominium project, which really would have spiked the numbers. During that process, plans are submitted for plan check and checked for minimum acceptance criteria. Then they're routed to departments for review, and all departments provide their comments, which are compiled into consolidated letters. If any revisions are needed, those are resubmitted, and plan review is- If any revisions are needed, those are resubmitted and plan review is checked a second time. Once all the plan review concerns are satisfied, permits can be processed for issuing. And managing this process with all these plans, permits, papers, has really been accomplished primarily due to the efforts of Amira and Tracy here. I think a big shout-out goes to the two of them, because it's way too much paper for me to manage. After the permits are issued, you know, we go into construction and we have a great oversight with our, our building inspection team, both Bob and Pam. And, and of course, for those contractors that don't obtain permits, then there's Pam. And she's really been doing a great job. I really want to give her a shout-out, you know. When she started, she dove right into reviewing all our old cases, which were really collecting dust, kind of like a fine wine. She determined the level of urgency that these projects needed and established priority cases and developed action plans. She's worked diligently to determine what past issues led to such prolonged resolution process, you know, with these code cases. And then she implemented procedures to accelerate that process. Pardon me. Currently Pam is managing some 39 active code cases. She's investigated, resolved and closed 50 cases over the past year, with an average caseload of 36 to 40 cases open at any one time. So that's, those are pretty busy numbers for one person. Some of the code enforcement accomplishments, you know, developing and implementing organizational and tracking system for the active cases. She developed and implemented a system for tracking and invoicing clients for code enforcement cost recovery. She's worked with our town attorney to develop proper forms and letters, enabling code enforcement to initiate and enforce our administrative citation process a little more streamlined. She's also worked very hard with Central Marin Police Department to coordinate state and local laws and language as far as signage on streets, so that there can be some enforcement on commercial and recreational vehicle parking. And of course, one of Pam's very significant cases that's moving towards resolution is 310 Summit, which you may recall was a new home that started 46 years ago and is now nearing completion. Now, that's, that's longer than I've been in this business. I don't know. And, you know, when you look at that and, and, you know, you talk to the owner and you think about it, the building codes are only intended for a design life of 50 years. And, and he's at 46. I mean, the house has almost reached the end of its life and it's still not done. But it's, it's improved significantly. There's actually concrete in the front yard, there's a driveway, there's a retaining wall, and some really good action is happening there. And I think, you know, within this next year, we'll see the end of that story. So I'd like to just kind of go on to some of this year's accomplishments or this year's coming projects that we have in the building department. You know, Adam mentioned the Restoration Hardware Project, which is going to be very large, very significant. And of course, two schools, we have Marin Country Day School and Marin Montessori School, which are both going to be under construction. And then the 200 Nellen, the automobile sales facility, I don't know if it has a real name. And then, of course, presently, the construction of the Enclave condominium project over on Casa Buena. And then ongoing tenant improvement work at the village and the town center, both of which have, you know, a handful of tenant improvements coming within the next few months. So we are plenty busy and, and running as fast as we can. And that will lead into our bit about the permit tracking system. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
And I, and I just wanted to offer, we're here, if you have any questions for us or want to know more or what have you, we're all invited to, to South Florida, I was going to say before, Kelly, if you ever want to go there. But anyways.
Jim?
I have one question. Once the planning approval is done and then the building permit is issued and construction work starts, okay, when do you close out the file so that you know that the project is done and you can report it up to the assessor's office?
Well, that's a very good point. You know, hopefully that's done in a reasonable period of time, not 46 years. You know, a normal project only takes six months, 12 months, maybe 24 months. What I found with our county assessor is that they're very interested in projects, you know, when they start to reach about 50%, sometimes, you know, they actually call us or email us to find out about the projects. As a matter of fact, Tracy was just doing a response to the assessor's office today about the Park Marin apartment project, which was renovated this past year. And I think it was just, what, a month ago or two months ago that we actually 100% finished, signed certificate of occupancies, gave it the big blessing. So of course, the assessor is assessing.
Do you have an automatic way of?
Presently, we do not have an automatic way. That would be in our future technology discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of what we do now is really, you know, paper, paper and pencil. And it's a bad way to do things because people lose paper and pencil. You know, so looking to an automated system where, you know, notices of completion are actually sent automatically. You know, I don't want to go too far into it, but, you know, the system we're talking about has that ability that, you know, if you have a project that's assigned to you, it can notify you that, hey, time to finish up. And if the project is finalized and finished, it can notify the assessor or any other agencies that we want to.
Okay, any other questions?
Can I just make a comment? I wanted to just say thank you. I mean, we appreciate you. I don't know, I'm not sure that gets said as publicly or often enough, but we recognize the complexity of the work that you do. And it's not just that the codes or the facts are complex, it's that the people in our beloved town can be somewhat complex, too. And we are not insensitive to the pressures you find yourself under. And we know that you recognize that the work that you do outlives all of us and benefits the community in a very profound way. So please accept our profound thanks for the work you do. It's great service.
Well said.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, our next presentation is going to be postponed for a future meeting. Chief Schertz was unable to come. So we'll move along to the consent calendar. And the purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together that are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They can be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, staff, or the public may actually request removal of an item for discussion. And then I will reschedule the discussion of that particular item. At this point, does anyone have any particular item they would like to pull? And if not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move that we approve items for one little i through four, one, seven.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vazio?
Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay, the motion carries and we don't have any sanitary district items this evening, nor do we have public hearings. So we'll move on to the business items. And the first one is the consideration of a request for 2018 slash 2019 budget appropriation for procurement of ACILA, is it ACILA? Is that how they pronounce it? Acela? Acela permit tracking software for the planning, building and public works departments and discussion and possible direction to staff regarding implementation of a technology fee. And Adam, who is going to be reporting on that?
So Brian, Fenty is going to give the report. I just wanted to start it off as this is an effort that we've been working really hard towards the last 18 months to really bring Corder Madera to the 21st century in technology. And the financial platform was a big part. This is the second step. And so Brian and the staff are going to talk, this is a culmination of all of their work over the past year, really looking at different systems, but really trying to use technology to our advantage ultimately to give the best customer service possible. So when you think about when admin, finance, building, planning, public works, we touch a permit or a residence, a site, everybody can see it. So when you can log on, you can see that residence and you can see everything, everybody that has touched that, that residence or that, the permitting process. And ultimately, what that does is it's a factual history, but it also gives us the best enhanced customer service to our residents. And so I'm really excited about this and I'm excited to hear the presentation.
Yeah, so does that then allow Todd, for example, if a neighbor is curious what's going on next door? They can key into this and they can see the progress?
They wouldn't be able to key into it, but we would have that information if it's a public record, that we would be able to really quickly pull that up and give them some answers. Again, if it was a public record, so yes. And then the other part is we're not asking for a budgetary appropriation at this time. This is, if you like what you hear and you're comfortable with it, this is one of the decision points for council to direct us to come back to you in the budget process for this coming fiscal year. And so we have the monies available in the, in the upcoming budget within our equipment replacement fund.
Okay, great, thank you. Brian?
Yes, good evening again. Tracy and I'll do just a brief overview for you all. Again, like Todd mentioned, there's a very detailed staff report on it. We've spent countless hours researching this and kind of looking at what we have and what we could have and how much our customer service could really be improved, you know, both in-house and outside. So again, just a brief overview of the Acela system and, and the discussion of the technology fee. What we're requesting from town council is again, to consider the 2018-19 budget appropriation of $113,840. And that's for the permit tracking software. This consists of a one-time cost of $76,000 for implementation, setup and training, and then a recurring annual cost of $36,888, which is the subscription and support fees. And of course, following that would be a discussion regarding a technology fee to partially offset these costs or totally offset these costs, you know, since we do operate in a cost recovery kind of basis. So with that, I'll invite Tracy up here to talk a little bit about, you know, some of the negatives about our current, current software.
Mayor Condon, council members, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. And like Brian said, I wanted to discuss our current situation with permit tracking software, just to make you aware of what the shortcomings are today, like we've talked about tonight when Adam spoke and Brian spoke earlier. Our job is to make sure that we provide information to the citizens of Corder Madera and our applicants and customers and that we provide excellent customer service, that we listen to them and what they're asking for us, or we observe what might make their dealings with us easier and faster and simpler. So again, our current permit tracking software, it is lacking in a few important areas. One being that the public cannot view information and property history and permit activity regarding their property or regarding their neighborhood online. They need to call us or come into the office and look at paper or request verbal reports from us on various activities within the town of Corder Madera. The acceptance of that, obviously, is our major planning projects where we offer up that information and plans and whatnot as they go through the planning entitlement phase. Similarly to that, our applicants don't have access online to make requests, look at the status of their building permit application as it moves through plan review. They are not able to schedule inspections or view the results of those inspections. We frequently have property owners that wish to make a payment on their permit so their contractor can then come in and sign for it. Those property owners have to make a trip out of their workday or their day to the office to pay. And we hear from them and our applicants that having the convenience in this day and age of doing some of those things online would, would be helpful. Again, more about capabilities of doing things over the internet, internet. Our field personnel, Bob, our building inspector, and Pam, our code enforcement inspector, and to another degree, some of our maintenance staff, when they're out there in the community and they see different things going on, they can't look up that information, check for a permit or check for property history via a mobile device. They've got to call or come in or figure out some other way of learning what it is they see in the field. Entering inspections on the field, in the field currently is not possible with our permit tracking system. Our building inspector comes back to the office and goes from paper and types it into the computer. Lastly, the staff, office staff is performing many tasks on paper, as Brian mentioned previously. Some examples are processing of plan reviews, keeping track of due dates, creating letters of correction for our applicants is happening on paper manually outside of the system. We also have very little reporting capability with the current permit tracking system and no mapping capabilities. Visual representation of data is helpful for staff, it's helpful for management and it's helpful for our citizens. An example would be permit activities overlaid onto a community map to see what's going on in your neighborhood. Enough of the negatives.
It's hard not to dwell on those.
In sort of working through this process, I wanted to quickly also just say briefly about how we learn more about the different types of software systems that are out there. Brian has a long career working with various different permit tracking software systems, as does Amira. So that helped, their past experiences helped underscore maybe what some of those deficiencies were or what the possibilities might, might be with a system that does meet our needs in a better, in a better way. We also had conversations with other jurisdictions within Marin County and beyond about what they're using and maybe some of the strengths and weaknesses of those software programs. And through those conversations and research independently, we managed to sift to the surface three potential permit tracking software systems. And Brian will go into a little bit more detail about that. Obviously, we had product demonstrations and scoping meetings with these software vendors. And some of the benefits that we could realize from a change are on the screen here. I'll just briefly, hopefully, go through them. Extremely important would be the community benefits. I talked about convenience that we don't have today, that we would be able to have with a newer, more current permit tracking system. Online access to view property history and permit activity, review their plan check corrections, which currently are manually consolidated and emailed to them. They can schedule inspections and see what time of day that we, the inspector has us, has them scheduled for that day. And again, pay fees. We'd realize also transparency, a greater degree of transparency, if you will, about property records, converting old permit data and providing it online for people to look at historical records dating back to, as long as we've had a permit tracking system, would also be made available. Inspectors and field personnel addressing staff benefits now, internal benefits, they'd be able to conduct inspections in real time and our inspection results. And our contractors could then view those results for their permit applications online instead of on paper. Hopefully, that would then allow us to fit more inspections into Bob's day. We do not like to tell our customers that we don't have room for them. So adding to his workload by eliminating the by eliminating the paperwork he has to do at the office, we think would be of benefit to our applicants and our customers. Additionally, related to internal productivity and efficiencies, we'd have opportunities to reduce paper and the use of paper, reduce manual lookup functions related to parcel data, zoning information, contractors, license and insurance information. And it improves the sharing of information between departments as we have a central location for all of this information in one, one system. Again, I think besides just internal productivity and efficiency benefits, our citizens would benefit from a newer permit tracking system. And I'm going to turn it back over to Brian to roll it all up.
Don't go for us. You know, one of the things that Tracy touched on was just the ability to do reports, generate reports about the work that we do. For me, analytics is a real important factor. You know, how many permits did we issue? How many plan checks did we do? How much time did it take to do those plan checks? How much time does it take to build the projects? You know, what size projects, residential, commercial, square footage, number of residential units? I mean, all of these are important questions that right now, we have to tear that information out of the file drawers and the files and the computer system that we have. A really big part of it for me also was that our current system, the Eden system, and I don't want to say too much bad about it, but it was not able to migrate any of the data from the previous FoxPro permit system, which was a good 17 years' worth of information. None of that was able to be brought into the new system. And so in other words, that's just a black hole as far as reports goes, you know? The new system that we're proposing to you, we'd be able to migrate all of it, take all the FoxPro from 17 years ago, the current Eden system, bring it all in. We'd be able to generate reports on all of that, all of that work. So that's, that's really important for me. What it equates to is, I think of it as an integrated civic management system, you know, something that'll work for all of us, building, planning, public works, fire. It can even go further than that. It can provide our boss, the town manager, with information and you guys with information about what's going on in town. I mean, they even have systems where you can do overlays where if public works is thinking about doing street improvements, but then we've got a contractor who's pouring concrete on the same day on the same street, you know, the little flag pops up and says, hey, somebody's going to have a problem, right? So, you know, those kind of abilities are out there and really what we have right now is kind of like the dark ages. So that's, you know, that's the wonderful part about it. And of course, the hard part about it is how much it costs. But we really tore into that. We analyzed a number of systems and looked at a number of prices. We narrowed it down to these three, you know, top running candidates, the IMS system, Acela and Trackett. They all have their pros and cons. They're all very similar in what they can provide. IMS is kind of a new system. They've really only been up and running for barely two years. Interestingly enough, the two guys that developed it are both offshoots from Trackett. Trackett is a long-running system. It was very, very good, but then five years ago or so, it was bought and sold and changed hands five times, and now it's just a big mega corporation. And so what you don't get is any service. You know, there's no support, no service from them. Acela, on the other hand, kind of meets all the needs that we were looking for. It's, you know, about in the middle price range, you know, Trackett, a little too expensive, and IMS doesn't have that running history. So Acela is pretty reasonable. That cost factor kind of leads into the whole discussion of cost recovery and possibly implementing a technology fee. We think that there's a number of different ways to do that, you know, adding a technology fee to the permits. We've looked at a number of other cities around in the county, and most of them have a technology fee, although it's very, very interesting that their methods of charging for the technology fee are far-reaching, you know, they're not consistent at all. You know, after analyzing the way that they do their business, we came up with a couple of different examples, you know, a water heater versus an addition versus a commercial tenant improvement, and what the technology fee might be based on their systems. And we kind of came up with two recommendations for us, you know, either a 0.25% project valuation or possibly a fixed flat fee. We would be open to any other ideas or even, you know, pursuing research on other ideas. But both of those have the opportunity for cost recovery for us, you know, one more than the other. I think right now, the one that I would be leaning towards recommending would be the 0.25% of the project valuation tagged onto the building permit. It gives you an example of what that might be depending on the project. You know, a small project, a water heater would be $7.50. You know, a big, huge addition would only be $375, which is still reasonable. And then, you know, a $1.5 million commercial TI would end up paying a little more. But that 0.25% would generate enough money for us to pay for this whole system and then also allow a little bit of room where we can do some more improvements, which might be, you know, digitizing some of the old paper files and making those accessible to everybody, you know, via the computer, and one day possibly even to, you know, the citizens. So that's really it in a nutshell. Council, have any questions? Jim?
Yes. Once this is fully implemented and sort of on a go-forward basis, will building plans, i.e. blueprints, be stored online electronically? Are you still going to have these huge?
Huge rolls of paper. We have huge rolls of paper. That would be my dream, that all of the plans and all the documents would actually be digitized. So the goal would be that, you know, a project comes in, we do our plan check, our permits, our construction, and then afterwards, that would be scanned and put into the computer. It would be accessible to all of us, and we may choose at some point to make some of that accessible to the public out there. You have to be a little bit mindful about, you know, copyright infringement and security issues and things like that, but there is a possibility. The other longer-term dream would be to skip the paper altogether and have an electronic submittal and electronic review. And, you know, and that way, you know, we're not-
Do both.
Do both. It could happen, yes.
That way, you don't have to scan it, but you've got a hard copy.
Right, very good.
I just wanted to add, we do, we do do some imaging of documents and plans to keep up, if you will. Those are sent out to an outside vendor, scanned, and provided back to us internally viewable system. So we are doing some of that at the current moment.
We have a lot of catching up to do.
But not, there is a file room full of paper, as Brian said, that-
Goes back to the 1940s, 30s, 20s.
Yep.
Yeah.
Diane?
Hi. Brian, when I looked through the chart of how you're proposing to charge for the technology fee, some places, there's a distinction between project valuation and permit fees. And permit fees, I understand, are sometimes based on valuations, sometimes on scope, sometimes on other things. Can you, is it possible to simplify that? Like what, I thought our own permits related in some way to the value of the work being done.
Right. We, Amira can help me out on this one, but I think most of our permit fees are kind of flat fees, fixed fees, you know, based on the project.
Based on the dollar value or what?
No.
There's flat fees that the town adopted?
Oh, just if you're doing any work, regardless of the size, it's going to cost X.
Yeah, well, depending on the project. So as an example, a kitchen remodel might be-
$550 is the flat permit fee.
Yeah. So if you do a $10,000 kitchen remodel, it's that. If you do a 20, 30, 40,000 kitchen remodel, it's still the same.
So was there, I'm sorry, guys, but the reason is because, what's the difference between scope and value?
Were you talking about Fairfax?
Well, something like a couple, Fairfax, for example, has scope, right? And Nevada has scope and valuation.
Yep. There, we looked at their published fee schedules. A couple of them, for instance, Ross, I called to get clarification because their fee schedule was not clear how they were charging this fee. Fairfax makes a judgment call, as sometimes we do, how many inspections are, is this permit going to take and charged appropriately? So if you have a kitchen and a bath, that might be more than just a kitchen remodel, for instance. Whereas the jurisdictions charging based on valuation have a specific calculation, oftentimes an entire table of different ways that they calculate based on that valuation. So they'll have a range of valuation is this multiplier, and this larger range of valuation is this multiplier. So they can get quite complicated as far as how they charge fees based on valuation and the scope, what the Fairfax charging of scope seemed to be a little bit of a more simpler way.
Right. But the first proposal, the first option you're providing us, is just based on what an applicant says, a project's going to cost $100,000, whatever it is, that's the number that gets used for this fee.
That's correct. Similar to the street impact fee is 1% project valuation. This would work in the same manner. It would just look at that information they've provided us and perform the calculation to return a dollar amount fee for a technology fee.
Okay. I recognize it may not be possible, and there may be inequities if you try to apply that concept to the permit fees and other things, but the simplicity of that is attractive. I wish that there was some way to have a similarly clear and unambiguous way for people to understand what things are going to cost and so forth. I recognize that one-size-fits-all wouldn't work particularly well in some situations because there are kitchen remodels, and there are kitchen remodels, right? And some must be more complex than others. I don't know. So anyway, okay, thank you for reminding me that I don't know what I'm talking about. So I appreciate it, guys.
Diane?
As somebody who just underwent a kitchen remodel that was one of the more complex ones, I'm, yeah, I'm with you. So my question is, how does the valuation work if you run into things like structural changes that happen while, when you've opened up a wall and discovered a deficiency? All of a sudden, the cost of construction increases because you have to fix the deficiency, but the actual overall project is not any nicer necessarily. So curious how that works. So that's my first question. Then my second question is, do any of these cities that are listed on this slide, do they have this software or similar software? And is that where they are applying this, these funds? Or how are they utilizing these funds?
You know, I'll let Tracy speak to that because I think you did a little bit of a survey about what other cities have. So go ahead.
Sure. So question two, sorry.
Yeah.
My friend. Question two. These other jurisdictions on this list and beyond Marin, we polled to, and spoke with several of them to find out what they're using. Predominantly, we're seeing Trackett being used. I would assume due to the sophistication of Trackett that they're performing this fee calculation within Trackett, collecting the fee there, similar to how we would collect fees using the permit tracking system. There's, yeah, I'd say predominantly Trackett within Marin. And then outside of Marin, we're seeing more of Acela. For example, Napa County, Sonoma County, Palo Alto, Berkeley are all using Acela.
I might interject that most likely, a lot of those bought it years ago. I haven't heard a single city that would be interested in buying it now. And as a matter of fact, the-
What is it?
Sorry?
What is it?
The Trackett system.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, you know, and personally, I had some experience with Trackett at two other cities. I implemented it at one city where I worked. And then, you know, when I was up in Napa, they, the city of Napa actually had a really, really nice Trackett system. But they had bought it years ago, and they bought all the bells and whistles. And even the one that I implemented was a whole different animal. And what everybody says now is like, oh, yeah, great program, except if you need help, forget it. It's like you just can't get any. And to me, if I can't get service, you know, then I'm not going to buy a product, right? Because we know we're going to have problems. There's going to be that day, and we're going to have to call up and say, okay, what do we do? How do we fix it? You know? And it seems like Acela is there, at least that's, you know, that's how they come across. They're really there, and they're willing to teach you how to operate and fix the system yourselves. Your other question, Diane, about changes or revisions, you know, it really kind of becomes a judgment call. Sometimes they're really small, you know, like you're working on a kitchen and you open up a wall, and let's say the whole thing's eaten up by termites or rot, and it has to be replaced. And, you know, for us at our level, it's like, okay, not a big deal, you know? Maybe we make some changes on the plans and we just keep moving forward. But on the other hand, if it was a big project and all of a sudden, it was found that the wood beams to support the second story aren't going to work out, and they have to put in big steel beams, and that's going to add, you know, $20,000, $30,000 to the value of the project, it does mean a little bit of a change in our permit structure because certainly, it means a change in our review process and then our inspection process. So our eye on that, where we kind of focus is that, you know, the goal is just for us to break even, cost recovery. You know, we're not out to make a fortune, not out to make a profit, but we're also not giving it all away charity-wise, right? We want to support our staff and be able to grow in our capacity and abilities.
Thank you. Can I ask a quick follow-up, though? Does the Acela program track that? And can you then use that to help capture?
Yes. You have the ability to do revisions in the system and capture any additional staff time that's used on those revisions, whatever they are. If it was an exterior planning department item or an interior structural item for building, you know, or something else for public works, yeah, we can track all of that. It would be tagged right on to the master permit. It would just be a revision or a change, and then we would capture our time and cost recovery.
Okay, great. Thank you.
One thing. Would you go ahead with the software if you could not collect a fee on it?
Yes. Then I would have to, yes, I would. I would just have to change my song and dance a little bit.
Second thing. Somebody said, you're hitting me with a fee. What is the actual cost of providing the service? Are you guys going to be able to provide, do that?
That's kind of a good question. And again, you know, if our whole basis is cost recovery, we should have those numbers at our fingertips.
Right.
A lot of those fees we don't-
I'm thinking of an initiative that's being circulated.
Well, yeah, a lot of our fees are based on that. It's based on time. And so we, as a council, we've decided to use flat fees. But those flat fees were still based on an analysis of time spent, hours, who's, you know, who's touching that. So yes. And the second piece is with this, you're right, we don't need this fee. We're purchased, we're going to recommend a staff that the council approve this, this purchase next fiscal year. But something this will allow us to do is we would then take this monies from this fee, and we put it into our equipment replacement fund. And what that'll allow us to do is pay for ongoing maintenance of the system. And ultimately, five, seven, 10 years from now, purchase a new system, we'll have the funding there available. So that's what it allows us to do.
And then you're talking in favor of the Acela system. Are you aware of a bunch of users in the neighborhood we could call if you got stumped and you couldn't get a hold of help?
We have some, not directly in our neighborhood, but we do have some. And actually, right in our neighborhood is our friends over in Larkspur, and they're, they're watching our reports and reading everything, and we're kind of doing the homework for them.
Okay.
Are there any, any questions from the audience? Yes, Karen, please.
You've covered a couple. Karen Gribosi, 111 Parkview Circle. You've covered a few of the questions that I had, basically references and talking to other municipalities that use the same product. But I was interested in hearing- But I was interested in hearing of other municipalities that have used the same product over a relevant period of time, so that they're no longer in the honeymoon phase? Because that's when they're all, wahahaha, wide-eyed. And then I had a question about how, so you're charging this fee. You're not charging it to recover the purchase price. You're charging it to create a reserve for something in the future. I wasn't clear from the last answer that you just gave as to what, what the point of the fee was. I mean, because it's not gonna pay for the product. You're gonna pay for the product, not out of the sales tax override, but... I'm the chair of the sales tax override. But, so I wasn't clear about how the, what your cost recovery was. And then I did have a question about the valuation versus the actual. And also a question about security. I recently, and then another question that I had about going back and scanning is that I recently needed a image from Erie County in Pennsylvania. So I didn't have the opportunity to go into their office. I had to do force of personality with some guy 300, 3,000 miles away. And it turned out that what had been scanned looked like just this black image on what they had electronically. And then he had to go someplace and actually produce a paper thing. And then that was legible. So I'm concerned about when you start scanning back history quality control. And I think that covers it for now.
So I'll take the first couple of questions. You know, technology's expensive. And yeah, we can't get our upfront costs day one, but over time, we can, we can, we can offset that. But again, it's important to point out that there's annual subscription and maintenance costs. And it's, I think it's approximately, what is it, $30,000, $35,000 a year? So yes, this technology fee would help on an annual basis pay for that. The, on the IT side, it's same conversation we had with the cloud version of our financial platform. We're working closely with our IT department, Michael Dang. And we, every step of the way, we're making sure that we have our redundancies and safety measures in place. And he has approved this software platform. And so it's something that we monitor 24/7. And so he has approved this project. And do you guys have any other comments you wanna cover from Karen?
The honeymoon phase. I'm leaning towards saying there's no such thing. You either, you know, you have a good system and you know when you don't, right away. And I think, would you agree with that? But I, we did, or I did speak with the city of Palo Alto, who's been using it for quite some time. Since their Palo Alto, they have some additional bells and whistles, not related to Exella, but related to some other ways they've presented data, which maybe that's a future goal. But they've been using it for quite some time and didn't have any complaints. I spoke with the town of Corden Baderas, former permit technician, Carla Maris, who went to Berkeley, city Berkeley, uses Exella. And he's used it for quite some time and got some good feedback from her. Especially valuable since she's used the system we have here today. She's used Exella at Berkeley and has now moved on to Belmont, which is using Tracket. So that was helpful as well. And I think you mentioned also, I could probably address the quality control as far as scanning. That is, it can be an issue, especially when you get to very old documents and blueprints and microfiche. And photographs can be problematic. And there have been times where a document is not able to be imaged. It's deteriorated in quality or it's degraded somehow. So there are, you know, ways that you can work with the vendor to enhance those problems. That can have a cost associated with it. So our current imaging program, when we run across these issues, we pull it from being imaged and it's retained on paper with the town. I think technology's getting better and better, as we all know. So hopefully, those types of situations are reduced in frequency. But we are, we will pay attention to that.
And right on the heels of that, you know, when we talk about the old microfiche, which we have a massive cabinet of microfiche that goes way back. And then all the paper product, that's not getting any better. It's all sitting there and it's aging. The microfiche is aging and deteriorating. The paper is deteriorating. And, you know, so when we do something with it and scan it and digitize it and clean it up as best as we humanly possibly can, you know, that's, that's the best we can do. If we wait another 10 years, it only gets worse. If we wait 20 years, it gets worse. You know, one of our big fears with the FoxPro permit system, that 17 years' worth of data, was that, you know, we thought we were gonna lose all of that. Because that's, you know, it's in one computer and it's on its way down right now. So we, we were smart enough to put our heads together and come up with a couple of dollars and actually extracted all that information into Excel spreadsheets so that it could be migrated over. You know, that's just smart management, being able to work with what you have, the old, the old information and the old data that you have.
And so I just wanna thank the staff. I mean, really, out of, since being here, this process that this team has gone through over the last eight-plus months on this, on this software, I mean, it shows. They went out there, they really were thoughtful in their approach. The staff report shows it. So I wanna thank them for that. So we are gonna recommend this software in the upcoming budget for you. And we're also, you know, as a discussion piece, potentially bringing back to you at some point a discussion of the technology fee. And we just wanted to share that with you. If you have any feedback or direction, it is helpful for us to know and so we can best prepare for that meeting.
Right. Well, I especially like, the last point that you brought up that you did at the beginning, is that the new program has the ability to integrate into it the old stuff. It just brings to mind a case we had where we had to rely on he said, she said, because we didn't have a lot of the details. And so I'm glad that we have that capability to just be able to go back and get things current and up there. Jim, did you have one more thing? And then I wanted to ask for direction.
One question I have is about the technology. And I'm coming from a standpoint of having worked with investment accounting systems that are of various generations. And I sort of found that you don't wanna buy it when it's in an alpha state because then you're basically creating the code. But you don't wanna buy it after it's been out there for 30 years because in between, there's been all sorts of patches and spaghetti put into the code. In terms of these three software project, products, what's your sense of how clean the code is?
Good question. You know, and I think we can, we can arrange for a demonstration. But what you'll see with our recommendation of Exella is that, you know, one, they have been around for quite some time. But they've also improved their own systems and their own abilities just dramatically over the past 15 years. So they are really, you know, new, modern, cutting-edge as far as that goes. Every day, they're looking to make something better and improve it and support it. You know, and that's the big plus for me, that it's not old and outdated.
Have you been able to talk to any technology people who actually sort of consult on these projects to tell you that, yeah, it's a wonderful system? They put a great interface on the front end, but it's still cobalt back here, okay? Or it's sort of like, yeah, they, 10 years ago, they said, all right, our code's getting stale and old and we're gonna redo it and port over the structure to a new database or whatever.
Well, that's a pretty in-depth, I think, IT kind of question. And certainly, we could bring Michael into that. But, you know, from all appearances, it really looks like Exella is, is, is doing very well at that as far as not 30-year-old, you know, software or codes. You know, the IMS system is brand-new, you know? And granted, two of those guys came from Tracket. And, you know, back in the day, Tracket was one of the very premier systems in the country. You know, but they don't have that support today and that's what's lacking, you know? And you do see that in Exella.
Is there ad hoc reporting capability built in?
It does, yes. So we can, we can call up our own reports based on information. Plus, I think, what do they have? 110 or 120 canned reports, you know, standard reports? Which is way more than we need. Yeah.
And you're willing to re-engineer your job to work well with the software as opposed to forcing the software to do what you used to do?
I think it's kind of the opposite.
Right.
What?
I did say, I think it's kind of the opposite, honestly. The software we have now forces us to work around a lot.
Microphone.
Microphone.
A lot of it, so the quality of the data entry we get in it right now is not great. And it's not all that consistent. Whereas the newer softwares are much easier to use and to manage reviews.
Yeah, I'm just warning you that very often, the best way software works is if you have jobs, make the jobs work well with the software as opposed to trying to rewrite the code.
This, I think that these softwares are built around our jobs.
Okay.
And when they implement them, that's what they do, is they come in and they look at the processes we have in place and what processes we want. And they, they set up the software to work with those.
And that's the opposite of what we have now.
Right. It's very rigid.
Everything that we do for the computer.
Okay.
Well, I wanna thank you, Brian and Tracy and Amira. Thank you very much for really a detailed report. And unless anybody wants...
I'm not allowed to ask a question?
You may ask.
Oh, okay. I'm cautious about the cost. Okay, so I just wanna understand this. It's about 76 grand first-time fee and then 36 grand a year. You're estimating at the 0.25% fee that after a couple of years, we should, so that's generating maybe 71 grand a year. After two years, we're roughly breaking even. And then Todd, if I understood your comment correctly, after about the fourth year, we'll have banked sufficient money so that if we need to, we can either upgrade or do a new system or something. Is that the, the concept? The only reason I'm, that's a great plan. It's prudent, makes sense. By the way, great research, everybody. Here's why I'm cautious. It is the highest fee that would be in the county from all the jurisdictions surveyed. So are we gonna be able to say it is the best service in the county? Or it is the best in some way, other than we're just the most, the fact that we are the most fiscally prudent is pretty good. But I'd like to also say, you're being charged the most because you're getting the most or something. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah.
And do you, is it, I mean, and are you able to respond to that? Like, is it, are we charging the most only because we're the only ones thinking ahead about that technology is gonna need to be replaced eventually? Or will this system or our implementation of it or something be superior to every other town in the county?
I think this is a conversation that, the thought of such a fee, really wanted to bring to discussion. I think we have some more work to do.
Okay.
I kinda wanted to hear your initial response to it and feedback, and this is helpful. I think we have some more work to do.
Okay.
But I think we hear you loud and clear of some of the thought we need to put into it.
Okay, then with our choices, we can, at this point, we can approve the staff request to include this in our budget appropriation. Or we can request staff to return to council with additional information regarding this, this particular issue. Or we can disapprove by motion the staff request to include this budget appropriation. Diane?
Thank you. I wanted to thank Sloan for his comments. I think those are really good concerns about what our plan is for the cost recovery. Because I'm looking at that number, the 3750, that's a huge number. 375 is a pretty big number. 750, you know, we could at least set a floor of 15, but anyway. But we need a plan for that. Now, if we did something like reduce it from 0.25% to 0.18%, that would bring in approximately $51,000 a year, which would cover the 36. Plus, we'd be banking a little something towards replacement of iPads if they get broken. By the way, get really good cases for the iPads, please. Things like that. We don't have to go all the way to 0.25. I'm concerned about that unless we really have a good, good reason and can justify it because it's gonna be the best system and everything else. I'm guessing it's not. No offense. I also did wanna commend staff for the staff report. I thought this was a really well-written report. It convinced me that we needed new sophomore, software, so thank you. In the future, I hope we can analyze like this. I'm a little disappointed that the Eden didn't work out. It sounds like it was very deficient. And maybe if we had had the opportunity to do a little bit better analysis, we wouldn't have gone in that direction to begin with. But with that being said, I believe we should move forward with approving the staff request to include a budget appropriation in the 2018-2019 town budget. Presumably, that would be for the implementation, one-time cost of $76,952 for the Exella with the first year's recurring cost of $36,888 for a grand total in year one of $113,840. And request staff to return to the town council with additional information and analysis about a potential technology fee. So I am making that motion.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio? Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And thanks again to staff. That was a lot of work and it's really appreciated. Okay, Daria, it is your turn. This is consideration of a one-time performance bonus to the town manager of 5% of annual salary per employment agreement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to handle the, this item since I was, I was at the last meeting. And thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the town council. This is a consideration of a one-time performance bonus to the town manager of 5% of the annual salary per his employment agreement, which in this case amounts to 10, a one-time payment of $10,950. This item was heard at the April 17, 2018 town council meeting. And council reviewed and discussed the proposal and was supportive of it, but requested that staff bring it back one more time at the upcoming council meeting tonight in order to be in accordance with our practice of having items related to salary and benefits considered on to consecutive agenda items prior to approval. And this is for greater transparency.
Okay, so are there any questions from the audience? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council.
I'll make a motion unless you wanna have discussion.
I was just gonna say, if you would like to adopt the resolution...
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio? Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay, very good. And that was resolution number 18 slash 2018. And moving right along, do we wanna get Todd back? Thanks, Teresa. The purpose of this next item is that staff seeks to provide information regarding recurring revenues and expenditures affecting the town's general fund budget and to receive direction from council regarding the 2018-2019 budget.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm gonna turn this over to Daria. I just wanted to basically give you a quick overview. Tonight, we wanted, Daria and I wanted to give you an overview of how we're projecting this coming fiscal year's budget and get some feedback from you on some key decision points with that budget. And then from that feedback that we get from the council, we plan on meeting with the Sales Tax Oversight Committee this coming month to get their feedback and direction on some of our expenditures this coming year. And then to meet with our Finance Committee, which consists of Vice... which consists of Vice Mayor First and Councilmember Andrews. And then you will see that budget ultimately the first meeting in June. And the intent is, when you see that first draft in June, that you've already had some, you know what the key, you know, discussion points are for that, for that budget. And with that, I'll turn that over to Daria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council members. This item concerns the general fund budget, and just for everyone's benefit, this general fund budget is presented as the operating fund, which is the day-to-day expenditures and revenues, and doesn't include things like the Measure B Sales Tax Fund or the Park Madera Center Fund, even though those funds are included in the town's financial statements as part of the general fund. On our books, we segregate all those funds, and this particular item is mainly concerning the operating fund. So the current year's budget and a draft of next year's budget begins on the spreadsheets following the staff report. And the first spreadsheet is a summary which shows this year, 2017-18's current budget and the estimated actuals, since the fiscal year has not yet been concluded. And some of the major highlights from this budget are the fact that we expect the town's revenues to exceed the expenditures by about eight-hundred thousand dollars this year, which will bring the general fund ending balance to nearly three-point-three million dollars, which is an eighteen percent reserve, and it's eighteen percent of the total expenditures and transfers out. And for the purposes of this spreadsheet, I went through and just, it didn't do every single line item, but just the items that looked, you know, like they were going to be a lot more or less, if an entire department looked like it was going to come in on budget, I didn't adjust each line item. But the major highlights from this year's budget are the fact that sales taxes look like they're going to be decreased by about three-hundred thousand dollars from what was in the budget, and that's, that's based on sales tax revenues to date. Also, transient occupancy taxes look like they're going to be nine-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars instead of one-million-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and that, again, is based on revenues a year to date. But offsetting those decreases in revenues, the town has received approximately five-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars in fire disaster reimbursement, as well as a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in storm disaster recovery. So that is offsetting some of those lower revenues. So all in all, as I said, the, the ending fund balance is expected to increase by about eight-hundred thousand dollars. So in terms of the following year, 2018-19, the preview of this draft budget, which is on that same page and also on the following pages, does include some of the items we're, we're seeking direction on, just so that we can, you can see the impact of those items. So before I get to that one, a couple other things I wanted to mention about this year's budget are the pension stabilization trust that was established. That's included on the line that says retirement unfunded liability. So when it says that the town is paying this year one-point-three million dollars for unfunded liability, that includes the pension stabilization fund payment of three-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand dollars. The amount we actually sent to PERS was nine-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars before that line item. So for next year, sales tax and property tax continue to be the largest portions of the town's revenue in the general fund. Property tax is expected to increase approximately two-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars, according to Marin County, and that is about a four-point, about a four-point-five percent increase. Franchise taxes are expected to increase by about forty-six thousand dollars due an increase, due to an increase in garbage rates. The town receives a percentage of garbage rates, garbage franchise taxes collected. Now, the state was, has given an estimate of sales tax increasing throughout the state, not particularly in Corder Madera. And based on, on that, I did increase the sales tax revenue from six-point-four million dollars, which we include this year, to nearly six-point-six next year. And most other revenues are expected to be, to be pretty stable. In terms of expenditures, which are also on this page and the following pages, and I'll just mention that some of those categories may look a little different than the last time you've seen these pages, and that's because we're in the middle also of a, of a technology upgrade in the finance department. We've, we've just had the consultants here this week, today was the second day, and we're going live this week, and we've rewritten the chart of accounts and, and the new chart of accounts and the new software system is going to allow us to get reports that are more meaningful and, and, you know, things that people really have requested, instead of just standard reports that have been decided on a long time ago. So that's why a lot of these categories may look a little different. So we're in the middle of doing that right now, and hopefully at a meeting soon, you'll be able to get a report from that system. So the, the expenditures that are in the draft budget are, the changes are, the CalPERS unfunded liability payment is expected to increase by approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and that's discussed in the staff report about the fact that CalPERS has lowered its discount rate to seven percent starting next year. The town will see the impact. And also that the CalPERS is going to be changing its amortization period for the unfunded liability from thirty years to twenty years, and the town's required payment for unfunded liabilities has been growing. Expenditures for police services are expected to increase by about a hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars. Salaries and benefits for personnel, not including the fire department, have been increased by three percent in the draft budget, and this includes step increases and a maximum increase of three percent to the salary schedule, although that has not been decided upon. Expenditures for the fire department are expected to increase by approximately a hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand dollars. And you'll be seeing a budget for Central Marin Fire Department separately. In this budget, you'll just see a line item for the fire department, similar to what the police budget is, but you'll see the, the Central Marin Fire Department budget separately. A full-time engineering position will be added, but will be offset by the elimination of an independent contractor who's been working two days a week, and the cost is approximately the same, so that won't really impact the budget. And contract personnel for landscaping, as well as for overtime, these costs are expected to decrease by about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars due to operational changes in the Public Works Department. And for health insurance, we, we don't have the rates yet. We usually get them in June, and they're effective the following January. So I've assumed a six percent increase January first, because that was what we received last year, and that's sixty thousand dollars. Additionally, the town is analyzing the amount of work done by the staff on behalf of the sanitary district in order to determine the proper amount to charge a sanitary district. We have an amount in there now of about three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand dollars, which we want to make sure is, is the proper amount. So some of the direction that we're requesting input on has to do with the following items. One is the gravel lot fees. About three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars is expected from those gravel lot fees, and staff is requesting that this three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars be paid into the pension trust fund in addition to the three-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand. We'd like to pay that again, the same amount that was paid this year, because PERS's rates are, may double within the next five years, the unfunded liability portion. And as you may remember, that pension stabilization trust was established in order to try to mitigate some pension rate volatility and to gain control over the investments. If we send the money to CalPERS, you know, they, they're not going to invest it the way the town requests. So the hope and recommendation is that if that's paid into the trust and we build up that balance, that can minimize the impact on the town's general fund balance in future years, as rates may tend to fluctuate wildly. The next item is the OPEB trust, which is other post-employment benefits, retiree health benefits. And the town has been making five-hundred-thousand-dollar payments in each of the last three fiscal years in an effort to fund its unfunded liability, which is approximately nine million dollars. The balance in that trust is approximately two-point-two million dollars. And staff recommends reducing that OPEB pre-funding payment to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and using the other two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to put into the pension stabilization trust as well, due to the fact, you know, about the, those same factors, the discount rate being lowered and the amortization period being shortened and PERS's rates possibly doubling within five years. The amount that's in the OPEB trust, it doesn't seem that we would have, the town would have to touch it within the next several years. The town's, they call it the pay-as-you-go amount, the amount that's actually being paid to retirees to reimburse them for their health insurance cost is, was four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars this year, and is going to be a little over five-hundred-thousand dollars next year, and it seems a manageable amount for the next few years for the town to pay. And if it, if it isn't a sufficient amount, there is the two-point-two million dollars in the trust that, that could be used. But to staff, it seems a better plan to use some of that money to put into the PERS, the PERS trust for pension payments for the unfunded obligations, just because those are the rates that seem to be skyrocketing and, and, you know, could really impact the town's budget. Disaster preparedness costs are some costs that are eligible to be paid for the, from the sales tax fund, Measure B, and that will be discussed with the Citizens Oversight Committee. But some of the items that are currently being paid from the general fund that may be able to be paid by the sales tax fund have to do with disaster preparedness and weed abatement and code enforcement. And the total is more than a hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars, and as I said, would be discussed with the Sales Tax Oversight Committee. The, also, while speaking of the Sales Tax Override Fund, staff does recommend a policy of maintaining a reserve of two-five, two-point-five million dollars in that fund to be used in the case of a disaster or emergency. Additionally, in the, the staff report, I, I talk about contributions to other organizations. The amount is actually sixty-seven thousand five-hundred dollars, not fifty-two thousand five-hundred dollars, but sixty-seven thousand five-hundred dollars is the amount that the town contributed to other organizations in the current year. And some of the things were, you know, with the homeless program and the Yellow Bus Challenge and the Crossing Guard Program. So staff seeks direction as to the amount and which actual programs to fund in, in the, in the next year, and recommends just having a discretionary fund for the council, not fund, but line item for the council for those sort of contributions to other, other organizations. Regarding the Park Madera Center Fund, that fund has an ending balance which is in the negative of more than one-point-nine million dollars. And that loss was, was, is the total of what has been spent on the Park Madera Center out of the general fund. But due to the refinancing of the debt and also to increased tenant rents, the town doesn't expect to continue to incur losses on the Park Madera Shopping Center. And the reason that this, this fund is segregated on the town's books, it was in order to track the amount the town has expended on the shopping center. If there's still need to do so, we will continue to do that, but if the town council wishes to do so, the town could combine this fund with the general fund on the town's books as it is in the, in the town's financial statements. That would eliminate the fund with a negative balance that would just go away, but would reduce the, the general fund's ending balance to nearly one-point-five million dollars in the current year, not by, as it's in the staff report, but to one-point-five million dollars, and would leave a, an ending fund balance of approximately seven and a half So those are the major items that, that staff is requesting direction on, and I'd be glad to try to answer questions if there are any.
Let me see. Have you been able to reach out to the three organizations that we have contributed to, the Yellow Bus, the Crossing Guard, and the homeless, to get an estimate of what they're going to be requesting?
Good question. So regarding that, the homeless winter shelter program, I believe we've contributed over the, we agreed as a council over the last three years, I think it's approximately thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars annually for that. That program is coming to an end. What is coming before council next meeting, we're going to have a presentation, it's what Councilmember Ovazio spoke about, that is the mobile shower program. And what they're asking is that we continue to, to contribute, I think it's thirteen to fourteen thousand dollars each year, and so that will be in the budget. We, as staff, we support it, and we're going to recommend that to council. I spoke to our folks at the, with the Yellow Bus Challenge Program. They have asked us to consider a twenty-five thousand dollars again this fiscal year. It's really the same conversation that we've had in the past. I am not planning on having them come before council for a presentation. I think it's, I think we know what the conversation is. It's just if you're, how you feel about that. What I am going to recommend to council to consider is specifically to the, to these accounts, our contributions for other organizations is up to a certain amount, and then, and then to talk about the merits of the five or six organizations asking for contributions and ask you to prioritize them as a council. Here, when it comes to the Yellow Bus program, I still, as a manager, I'm still a little bit conflicted about it, but we also have some shortcomings within the Crossing Guard program, and we may want to consider something like that this fiscal year. So that is one that I would appreciate some direction. I mean, we don't have to talk about it all night, but as it stands right now, I'm kind of, I'm not really sure how to, how to proceed with that. Their costs have gone way up. You may have seen the Marin IJ article. So their, their JPA is struggling. There's some substantial cost. They asked if we would consider, their staff, their town manager asked if I would consider presenting a higher amount contribution for the town of Corder Madera, and I, I shared with them at a staff level that I didn't feel like the information was there to support that. And so at this point...
Is this the Yellow Bus we're talking about?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm talking back and forth, but, so that is, I think that is the only semi-controversial conversation, I think, out of our contributions. It looks like all the other organizational contributions that we've been doing longstanding, and I think the council supports, but that is the one that staff is conflicted about.
If there are no questions, I have a que, oh, did you have a question? Okay, I have a question. One of the things that was always brought to us was with fire consolidation, our costs would go down, and now we're saying they're going up, and, and same with police.
So what I'll tell you is that if we were at our current projection, if we didn't consolidate, if we filled all of our positions going back three years, and we were today with all the increases in our current positions, our budget for fire would be eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand dollars more than it is right now in this budget. it is right now in this budget. So, when we started sharing operationally services and really merging this last fiscal year, we literally, and the, and the numbers show that, we took off over a half a million dollars from our budget in savings. I mean, it's just there. And so, it's been extremely successful. What it also allowed us to do, again, it allows, allowed us to, and CalPERS, and we're going to talk about in the next business item, but out of all the people, I'm surprised they're the ones that hold it up, but we're also have the opportunity to reform our pensions, from three at 50 to three at 55. And so, from a financial standpoint, Madam Mayor, I can, this is a huge success. It's something that others should pay attention to. And so, those numbers are real, and I'm not playing around with numbers. We literally, if we did not do this with Larkspur, your fire, our fire budget would be 800,000 plus more than it is right now.
Can I add something?
And the other, yeah, and the other thing too, what it is, pension costs are going up. And a lot of this is the pension costs, it's not the personnel, it's pension.
Okay, thank you, Daria.
Oh, I was, I was going to mention something along that line, his last point also, the increase that I mentioned, there does assume a 3% salary increase, and also does not include the pension reform for Corde Madera, because, you know, we'll revise that when that comes to be, but that hasn't been approved yet, so, by PERS.
And one last thing with the fire budget, it's a very conservative budget. We believe, the city manager and I, and Larkspur, and the finance directors believe there is additional savings within our operational line items. But right now, it's really hard to do that analysis over three to five years like we normally would, and you could compare line items. This is new. And so, those numbers are kind of conservative. And so, what we did is we took our normal, like, operational line items for supplies and equipment, and we basically merged them, and we're sharing them 50/50. And we think there's some redundancies and savings there, but we're just being safe right now. And so, I really think our, our budget should stay flat, but we're, we're being conservative in our estimates at this time. But again, very extremely successful from a financial standpoint. With police, you touched on it, police is start, right now, CMPA is seeing some large hits with the pension and salary and benefits. We're seeing some hits. But again, if you project backwards, and you go back over the last 10 years, sharing costs and consolidating has really saved us. Right now, I always compare us to Sausalito, and so, if you look at what Corde Madera pays for police services with a population of about 10,000, calls for service are very similar, the police departments are similar. We pay what we pay, it's approximately $3.4 million, while Sausalito pays over $5 million. And so, that's the redundancies, that's the shared services, those are the cost savings that you really realize over a period of time. I just can't emphasize that enough.
Okay, thank you. Sloane?
I do, I'm sorry, I've got a few questions. Sorry about that. Okay. So, the first one is, by the way, excellent reporting.
Thank you.
You tee up and make it easier for us as a town council to see what is happening by the clarity of the numbers. Okay. So, but the first question in that regard is, I wouldn't mind in future reports, if you consider adding a little more history than a single year.
Yes.
So, I recognize it's because you've changed the things or whatever, and trend lines are helpful, not just with where we've been, but things like in the non-departmental one, like what the, what the debts are, or what the liabilities are that we're trying to meet, and whether they're coming down or not. Maybe it's on there, I don't know, is that what you're pointing to, Todd?
No, that's the same thing.
Okay. I don't know, maybe, maybe it just requires more years of using the system to be able to enable you to do that, but for sure, just looking at last year compared to this year doesn't provide sufficient context.
Right.
Okay. Secondly, with disaster preparedness, I know you touched on it, or somebody did, but it doesn't seem, I think we ought to be willing to probably put something towards that, right? I thought we had, didn't we authorize a disaster preparedness full-time person that we're paying or something already? Why, why have we gone from 43 grand to zero?
Oh, it's going to override. It's going from another...
I don't know what that means.
So, one of the, one of the, and we're going to bring this back to the, so this is discussions we've had with the Oversight Committee about this. Historically, this current fiscal year, we pay for disaster preparedness from the operating budget, from the general fund.
Got it.
And we haven't been taking it from the sales tax override. And there's been some discussion, well, why aren't you spending money on disaster preparedness?
Because it was part of the thing, okay.
It's from the, and one of our discussions now, and I'm being positive that our sales tax measure passes, if it doesn't, I know we have it long-term, we are now then, and we're going to have this discussion with the Oversight Committee, but it's like pull it out of the operating budget, and it should be a reoccurring line item for the sales tax override. Staff is going to recommend that.
Okay. All right. The big question I'm going to have for you, Daria, has to do with the non-departmental numbers, but I want to do that last. With respect to the police, maybe this is for Todd. Todd, is that a contractual obligation, or are we just anticipating there's going to be another, you know, 200 grand in costs there? In other words, are we obliged to do that, or we're just projecting based on what we, like, does our vote even matter? In other words, if we're going to have to pay it anyway, it just is what it is, right?
Well, so, it's a great question. So, procedurally, that, and it's going before the police council next, next, this week, Thursday, I bet it's all running together. So, they will review it and ultimately approve it, and then each member agency knows what their share is.
Okay.
But from a procedural standpoint, if the Towne-Cord Madera Council said, look, we don't want to pay that, we have a problem with that, and this is only, this is how much we're willing to pay, it would go back to the police council. So, you do, every jurisdiction has the authority to override a budget, their share.
Yeah, I can't imagine doing that, I just was curious whether, like, how that worked, I didn't understand it. Okay. With respect to public works, we're somehow slicing roughly 100 grand off contract personnel, or I'm sorry, we're, no, we're reducing almost 300 grand for contract personnel or something, is that right? Can you, does that have to do with hiring, like, landscape, like, part-time people?
Right. Part of it has to do with reducing the landscaping personnel, that's, that's part of it. And then, the other part has to do with the contract engineer, who is in that category, who's going, not to be working anymore, he's retiring, and then instead, a person's going to be on payroll, so...
Okay. You did mention, I'm sorry to go over that again. Okay, and then the recreation general fund, somehow $100,000 less in salaries?
Yes.
We're just manning down a little bit, or...
Yes, I should have mentioned that in my report, it's in the staff report, but I didn't mention it verbally. One of the recreation supervisors who's currently in there is going to be charged to the recreation fund.
I see, it's just being moved to a different, okay.
With the hope that his costs will be recovered in the recreation fund.
And it's an important thing, so it is something that we've talked about before with the council. Really, what we're trying to do is saying, okay, if we're going to have a park and recreation program, what costs should we, as a town, say, okay, we are committed to? So, we're committed to the finance, I'm sorry, the director of Park and Rec, and then the soft costs for the building, the facility. Everything else, our goal is, we want it to be functional and reimbursable. And there was about a $300,000 deficit within the, within Park and Rec. And so, what we're trying to do is move the supervisor over, and then now close that gap. And I'll tell you that our estimates right now are, that we're estimating to close that gap by $280,000 with the work that Mario and Dave are working on right now. And so, we'll share that hopefully in June with you. So, that's a big deal.
So, how much will the deficit be?
Hopefully, we close it to $20,000 this next fiscal year, is our goal.
Instead of 300 down, we're almost break even.
Yes.
Good news.
Okay, and then my last question, although it's kind of multi-part, and it's really the most important one, is the general fund non-departmental charges here. Now, you went over this a little bit, but I'd like you to explain to me, or to the group anyway, maybe they know it better than I. So, there's about a 300 grand plus greater number for the retirement unfunded liability, about a 600 grand greater amount dedicated to the stabilization trust, and about 250 grand less to pre-funding OPEB.
Yes.
Now, you talked about all three of those things a little bit, but could you just dumb it down for me a little bit?
Yeah, so I want to, good, do you want to start? I want to talk about the philosophy between the two trusts, but do you want to take the first?
It's the single biggest change in our budget, so I just want to understand it.
Okay, on the, on the retirement unfunded liability.
Yes.
That is the portion that PERS is charging us, that they, that we have to pay, and that's for...
That just is what it is. We're not electing to pay an extra 300 grand, they're just saying the share's going to be 1.2.
You have to, because that was part of the lowering of the discount rate.
Got it.
So, we just have to pay that. The, the PERS 115 stabilization trust, now that increased amount, this year we paid the 366,000, which we are recommending we pay next year, but in addition to the 366,000, we're recommending that we pay those gravel lot, use those gravel lot fees to be paid, the $340,000, that's part of it. And then, the other part is the part you mentioned, the $250,000 from the OPEB trust. Moving that from the OPEB trust payment to the unfunded liability payment, did you want to say something about that?
So, really, it's us being proactive and attacking, attacking this. And so, the budget, it's, it's up to us, we can either put it into a reserve count, I mean, it's a good story. What we try to do, and it's, it's hard going backwards, because we handled the budget differently. And what we really try to show on this page right here, and it's hard to go backwards because there were a lot of ins and outs. For instance, we would chart, we would have a public works engineer, and 70% of that, that salary would be from the general fund, and you would see it under public works engineering, right, as an expenditure, but then you would see the other 30% in the sanitary district. Now, what you see is 100% salary benefits of a public works engineer is in our expenditures for engineering. And then, we charge back based on a formula, so everyone can follow the money of how much time we pay for the sanitary district. So, what you see on this pa, on this page right here, is our revenues are higher. So, our revenues are 18.9, and that's because, right, there's money coming from the sanitary district back to us as a revenue for services that we provided. If you go down here to our reoccurring expenditures, it's 18.3 million. So, really, the story here, and I wish I had my whiteboard, but it's like what we did this last fiscal year, and this next fiscal year, is we built a $500,000 surplus. And so, and it goes back to the conversation over the last 40 years, the worst financial storm, economic storm we've been in were in the late 2000s. We lost $2.5 million over five years, it was 500,000 a year. So, what we try to do operationally is say, okay, within public works maintenance, we saved about $250,000 in the budget, and that was based on how many full-time employees should we have, how many contract employees should we have, based on what type of service are we trying to provide. We saved about a quarter million dollars. We asked you this current fiscal year for an additional hire in public works engineering, but this next fiscal year, David Keen is retiring as a contract employee, it's about $120,000 we pay. Well, that new hire that you approved, she is going to be able to offset his cost. She's going to do his job. And so, it offsets, we actually saved money, and then 70% of her duties is assigned to the sanitary district to really attack our capital improvement projects. So, that is an additional savings, that's a lot of the savings we built. And then, the $280,000 gap in Park and Rec, that deficit, we've closed a lot of the operational holes that we've been talking about as a group for the last 18 months. And now, this, the good story is reoccurring revenues to reoccurring expenditures, so I pointed to Jim because he brought this up before, and you touched on it. What you're going to see in June is, we're going to provide you with the 10-year trends moving forward, reoccurring revenue, reoccurring expenditures to the best of our ability, you know, evaluating those, and then our debt. What debt do we know, the shopping center? Because here's the discussion as we go. So, this is, our budget's whole, we're, we're strong, but then we have some huge, we position, I guess the story to the council and to our residents is, look, we, this is working within our means. Make your own opportunity based operationally, and maintaining service at the same time, in good times and bad. We did it here. Now, the question is, in the non-departmental, you touched on it, the general fund, it went up, but it's through our, making our own opportunities. So, the question for council, there's some key things here. One is the gravel lot, the development agreement, it's about 340,000 annually, our first, hopefully, payment will be this fiscal year. And if that happens, the question is, what would we like to do with it? There's a thought to say, let's look at the shopping center debt. Do we want to start attacking the maturities, you know, and paying that down? We still owe about $600,000 on the CMPA facility lot that we, that we financed. How do we want to handle that is one question. The other one is, and it's, and it's really a key one here, we have two pension, we have a pension trust, and we have the retiree trust. Right now, we're paying $500,000, we're pre-funding it. At the end of this fiscal year, we have about 2.2 million in there. I call it a savings account now, because this is where I, just in really general terms for council to consider, that'll be fully funded in 14 years. That's a great story, council made that decision a long time ago. Here's my, here's my conversation for council to consider. As CalPERS, on the other side, starts to lower from 7.5% to 7%, as Daria said, right behind that, those, and those are huge costs, it's about a quarter million dollars a year as they get to 7%. So, it's this year we took a hit, next year we're taking a hit, we have a plan for that. So, we're going to keep this surplus going, we'll talk about that next fiscal year. But my thing with it is, after they do that, we're still not okay, because what they're going to do now is they're going to amortize our 30 years to 20.
Yeah.
So, that's a hu, that's, that could be potentially a half a million dollar hit. Okay. So, now, when we talk about our pots of money, right now, we're putting 366 a year into our pension trust, right? And that pension trust, again, for everybody, is we don't believe the discount rate should be 7. Our analysis, based on Bartel and Associates, said it should be 6.2. That difference is about $500,000. So, that's what we're trying to get to. So, the first question for council this fiscal year is to say, let's get there. And so, let's take the 366, do we want to use the gravel lot money towards it? And then philosophically, I want council to consider, and I'm going to work with the Finance Committee on this first, and we've been talking about this, but here's the thing, and this is tough, and I've been talking to the labor groups about it, okay? Fire and police have already gone through it. We are obligated to pay pensions, okay? We're obligated. Retiree health benefits in the past and forward, that's not a right, that's a moral obligation that the council decided to pay, okay? And we, we agree with it. And so, when you think about OPEB, retiree health, we pay approximately 600,000 annually, pay-as-you-go, that's our bill. You have this many retirees, this is how much you pay, here's the premium, 600,000. And so, I've talked, spoken to our labor groups to say, look, someday that money could run out, and if it doesn't, we come to a crossroads, and we're coming, you know, what, what do you want me to do as a manager? Do you want me to focus, and the council focus, on your pensions or your health? You know, and so, because you might not get both, and they want pensions. And so, my question then is, okay, we have 2.2 million in the savings account, great. Moving forward, moving forward, let's keep paying as we go, and we'll keep paying it as we go, 600,000, and it's going to raise. We have 2.2 million in the account. I think we should consider lowering, and I'm recommending right now, instead of 500,000 prepaying, lower it and cut it in half to 250. Keep pre-funding it, because that's important, we should do it, but move the other 250 into the pension. And so, try to bring that from 366 with the development agreement to 340, and then another 250 diverting from the OPEB, the retiree health, into the pension, and get that to a million dollars. We want, over the next five to 10 years, to put as much money into that trust as possible, because what that's going to do is, the future generations of council and staff, it's going to provide us options. When we go from 7.5% to 7%, that's a half a million dollar hit. And then, you go from 30 years to 20, that's another half a million dollar hit, that's a million dollars. So, right now, we pay a million dollars in our unfunded payments, it's going to double. So, think about what happens in the state of California with the bigger agencies, they have no plan for this. You can't, think about the Stocktons and the, and the Valleos, you're going to have bankruptcies, something's going to give. And so, for me, and as Corde Madera and the council, we need to consider and make some tough decisions. And so, I, that's the best way, and I've heard it explained to me by another manager, we're obligated with these pensions, but if we can't go, the boat can't goes down with them. And so, we have to have a plan. And so, I think we have a plan in place, but I don't think we need, I think we need to reevaluate the retiree health conversation, it was different than the council had five years ago. It was a great plan, hey, we, we're going to pay it down, and we did it, and we're going to do it in 14 years, we're in the best situation right now in the county for that. But I think we need to step back and reevaluate this. And so, that's what I'm going to challenge the Finance Committee and the council moving forward. And I'm sorry I talked a lot, but this is the key to our budget. We figured out our operating budget, we have a plan for our infrastructure with the sales tax override, this is the last piece. We have the infrastructure in place and the ability, but if we don't take the opportunity now, we will never have it. And I'm worried, and I think as, as we get audited, unfunded liability is unfunded liability, so it doesn't matter if it's here or here, they're going to look at the retiree health number, and they're going to look at the pension number. It's not like we're not pre-funding, we're, I look at, our retiree health is, is about 9 million, and our pension is about 18, depending on what discount rate you talk about. So, just add those together, and it doesn't matter if it's in the retiree health account or the pension account, we have it. And I think we need to put it in the pension, because 14 years from now, if you tell me you have 15 million in that retiree health account, and I only have five in the pension, I'm going to want to take that 15 and put it over here, and we're not going to be able to. You're only going to be able to offset it by about 800,000 a year. I know I talked a lot, but it's a key, this is the key piece to us, I think we figured it out. I think we figured out... I think we figured out the operating budget, the infrastructure. This is the last piece. And I know Jim and the MCCMC group is meeting a lot, and they're talking about this, but I'll tell you, from talking to my fellow managers and managers in the state, we are so far ahead of the game, and we have a huge opportunity here. And for the residents, I want them to know, we didn't just come to the general fund and say, well, we need an additional $900,000. We want to put it over here. We made our future. That development agreement, which was an 18-month negotiation, allowed us 340. The council made a great decision years ago for the 500,000. And again, as the side fund payments come off, that was the 366 for safety. Miscellaneous comes up next year, it's 240. So next year, when that comes off, we're not going to put it in the stabilization trust. It's going to offset that last quarter million dollar hit from CalPERS, from 7.25% to 7. So we have a plan. We're positioned good. The timing really helped us. And the last piece is the consolidation of fire. It saved us $500,000. That's the surplus. So that's probably more than you wanted to know, but that is really the key message for the council that I wanted you to think about. And the last piece is the sales tax. The sales tax is infrastructure, but it also has a couple key operational costs. And we've talked about it in the staff reports and everything we've talked about. And the conversation is, we pay about $100,000 for prevention and we debate that. I want to up that to 300,000. That's what the experts tell us we need to really handle the fire prevention on our hillside. And that would be, I'm going to ask the oversight committee to consider that, and ultimately the council. I am not going to pay for any personnel from the sales tax override, but behind it, to enforce our ordinances and help the fire marshal, I'm going to ask for about $100,000 for code enforcement. And so, a contract code enforcement officer to enforce our ordinances if we have to, because our fire marshal can't do it by himself. And so, there is an education piece, but there's also an enforcement piece. So those are operational costs, very sensitive to it. I've talked to the oversight committee about it, but I think I want to vet that some more with them. I know they have some strong feelings about that. And then ultimately, come back to the council, so you'll know that has been fully vetted, and you may feel differently or strongly about those. So, it's not to take cost out of the operating budget and just say, now we have the sales tax, let's take it out of here. It's to actually improve it, to, in some cases, triple what we're doing right now service-wise.
Thanks, Todd. Jim?
Yeah, I'm looking at the general fund revenue summary, and, you know, revised budget versus estimated actual, and it's going down. And then I'm listening to Todd talk about how, over five years, we lost 2.5 million dollars. And I'm sitting there going, do we need to start anticipating that we might be going that way again?
So the sales tax, so this is a great question. So, in fiscal years 16, and jump in here, Daria, but 1617, we brought in about 6.4 million. And then as we, and George helped us, we did a calculation with the county, and George and Daria and I looked at the sales tax revenues, and we estimated 6.7 this last fiscal year. What happened is, we saw about a $300,000 shortfall. It was specifically to the car dealership that is still vacant, and there's some, there's actually seven owners, and so there's some stuff going on there. But that was about a $200,000 hit to our revenues. And as you know, Corde Madera Town Center went over some major renovations and had some vacancies. When you look at everybody else's, our major property tax earners, they are all going strong and actually improving year to year. That was the issue that we had this last year. And so, what we did is, we pulled it back, and we took a very conservative number. And so, we're coming back to the 6.5. Sales tax overall with our earners are strong, and they're just, you're waiting for them to plateau and start to go down, and we're absolutely looking at that, and I think the 10-year analysis will help us. But this isn't a reflection of our sales tax revenues going down. It's specific to two main parcels. And we expect those to be filled this coming year. And so, we've been working closely with both shopping centers, as well as the car dealership.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Diane?
Well, I'm going to combine a few comments and questions. First off, as for format, thank you, this is easy to read. I personally would love to see a slight change in the percentages that you list. You list a percent of total for each category. I would love to see a percent change over the prior year.
Okay.
I find that, I don't know about the rest of you. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, percent change, just...
Yeah.
Yeah. I just find that a lot more helpful, because I can just look and see where the big changes I wanted to make sure that I am looking at the very first summary page correctly. There was a big reduction in retirement normal cost. I'm assuming that's due to fire?
Yes, because the fire department's budget is not in each of these...
Right. Pulled out and reported separately. Thank you. But the unfunded liability and retiree benefits and pre-funding of OPEB, all of those include...
The fire.
Fire.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Did this, did the town's operating budget take into consideration that garbage fees are increasing?
That's a good question.
I don't think so.
We did not.
Okay. We might.
And we're, the update on that, as we know, the increases are coming. They're doing a study right now, Mill Valley Refuge, as well as Tiburon, Mill Valley, and Corde Madera. The managers have gotten together, and we're also going to do an analysis and come back to council at some point. But it does not reflect it.
Okay, so...
Can I ask a question on that? Is that a big number for us, or no?
Yeah.
Like, how much is our...
14, 15.
Well, if you think of public works and all the stuff they put into, you know, compost bins, all our trash cans. Oh, I don't know.
I don't know. It could be a 7% increase.
But I mean, okay, I just, I mean, an order of magnitude, then. This is in the five figures, this number?
Dollars.
So it...
I don't know the exact amount of the garbage.
Yeah, you know what? Come back to it. Come back. But I think that's, let's just make sure we're accurate in that.
Yeah, okay.
For the recommendation that some of the disaster preparedness expenses be shifted to sales tax override, I think that's fair. We did want that to be used for disaster preparedness. I want to be careful that we're really clean, and I would anticipate the citizens oversight committee would also want to ensure that we're very careful and do the right thing. That being said, the code enforcement you're speaking of, I'm assuming, has nothing to do with our regular planning department code enforcement, and it's strictly clearing-brush kind of code enforcement.
That's correct.
Thank you. Combining funds, I would like, it sounds okay, but I also don't necessarily know that we need to do that. I'm talking about the Park Madera Shopping Center Fund. I would like a little bit more direction from staff, what your recommendation is. If you don't have a recommendation at this time, I suggest we just leave it and deal with it next year. We've got so many things going on, we don't necessarily need to belabor the point, unless you want...
No, I think the question is, you know, it shows a deficit, right? At 1.9 million, and that's the difference. Do we just want to park that, and at some point, write that off? And forever, if anyone has a question, they, what's that number? And we have it there, and it's transparent, and everyone can see it? Or do you want, what do you want to do with this thing? Do we, I think we should park it, write it off, and then show the budget.
Well, I'm guessing this, personally, I would think that this council would probably want to discuss the long-term plans for that center at some point, and maybe it can be attacked at that point.
Right, no, so what I guess, I, council, back when, what we brought in in leases to what we paid in financing, we had a deficit, right, every year? And it grew to 1.9 over the years. And I guess, and so you have that, and so I guess my question is, do you want to continue to show that? Or should we write that off, and we park it so everyone knows where it is? But moving forward, it's just a number. I mean, I'm just wondering, from a budgeting practice, do we want to keep showing that in our annual budget? It seems, it shows us a deficit, it really isn't. It's, I think we should write it off and park it.
Well, it's not...
It's an asset.
It's not really the deficit. It's sort of like, if you want to look at the cash flow from day one to now, it's a stub of the deficit. Personally, I'd like somewhere to be able to look up a number and figure out how big the hole has been from day one to now.
So we no longer, it will no longer grow. And so, the question is, do you want to pay that down? Do you want to pay ourselves back? Do you want to? That's my question, from an auditing standpoint. I mean, it's not getting any worse. We're in the positive now. The parcel is worth more than we paid for it, and we don't take a loss from year to year anymore. So, how do you want to handle that 1.9 million, I guess?
You know what? I would recommend bringing that maybe to the finance subcommittee, and let's talk about it. It's starting to get late. I have a couple more questions.
Go ahead.
I think it's one of those esoteric kind of, the decision could go either way, so... Is that all right with you, Jim?
That's what we're asking.
Okay, that's what I'd recommend. You asked for a direction request on some of these other things. As for the 340 from the gravel lot, I'm fine putting that in pensions. I think you're, that's good thinking. If you are concerned that maybe we are putting too much extra funds into the OPEB trust fund, well, the pension deficit is anticipated to increase dramatically over the next few years. Maybe we should hold off on OPEB and put more in the pension? Or maybe we should at least hold off for a few months on actually writing the check or making the transfer from OPEB into the trust fund until you kind of have more of a sense of what the council and staff want to do in terms of long-term strategy. So, that can certainly be done. Contributions to other organizations, that's not an easy one. Yeah, we'll probably have to have more discussion about that. Yellow Bus Challenge, I wanted to remind folks that the Tiburon-Belfadiar-Reed School Yellow Bus Program has taken on a bus run for the Cove School. So, in addition to tackling transportation for a decent number of East Corde Madera kids that go to the Reed District, they're coming back and running a school now for the Cove.
About 30.
So, just something to think about. Let's see. Any other direction you need? Sales tax override, okay. The formal policy about maintaining a reserve in the citizen, in the sales tax override fund, is that something that can wait?
It can wait.
Yeah, I don't, let's not make the budget process more complicated by starting to derail the conversation, and stuff like that would be my recommendation. So, yes.
Jim?
One thing I'd like the sales tax people to do is come up with sort of a policy, because I know, I've attended a couple of their meetings, and it's, I can remember George hauling out, advertising things to say, does this belong in here, and does this not belong in here? And if you could, you know, as we're approaching the election and getting ready to go forward, if you could start thinking about what sort of policy you want to write, so that there can be easy handoff from this council to this next council, and so on. And, you know, what's appropriate and what's inappropriate, and so on.
Can I ask one more thing? My understanding is that the value of a reserve policy is not just, in a practical way, we have money so that if there were a true disaster, but because it affects the rating that we receive from the credit agencies, and that that in turn can reduce the rate they charges, which in turn can increase the money that we have available to us for other things. Is that why that's in there? Or is it, in other words, is that, I don't mind putting it off, fine, but I think that there are reasons to consider that, which go beyond just having a rainy day fund. It goes into improving even further under Standard and Poor's or Fitch, whatever we use, so that we're, so that it's cheaper for us to transact our regular business. Right?
Right. It's, the reserve is for both reasons. That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Then do both I ask a follow-up? Is this a matter of timeliness? Do we need to deal with this now?
No, no.
Okay. I mean, if you want to, we can deal with it now, but it is 9 o'clock.
I will, and I'm usually the one who's terribly impatient. I really believe...
Yes, I know you are.
I really believe that the budget is among, if not the, most important thing we do. So I appreciate everybody suffering through it.
Right. Well, and I think though, to be mindful that this is more of just a broad-brush expose of what we're going to be dealing with, when we do have our budget hearings. And so, that, I think that staff, and of course, I don't want to assume, but I do think that staff has received the...
Direction?
The direction and the information to come back with, and how numbers might be tweaked. And so, if everybody agrees with that, then I think we can move on.
Totally agree.
Okay, great. Daria, thank you so much.
Really good job.
Thank you. Really good report. Okay, so then, Rebecca, it's your turn.
Of course. Sorry, I've been eating them. Cheer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. This item is to discuss and possibly provide direction and action to approve a draft letter declaring opposition to Assembly Bill 1912, which is the Public Employees Retirement Joint Powers Agreements and Liability. This request is being brought forward based upon a recommendation received from the League of California Cities, who is currently opposing this legislative action, which is working its way through the Assembly right now. It was amended on March 19th and again on April 19th. And what this piece of legislation does is limit cities' abilities to form or enter into joint powers authorities unless there is an agreement to take on some amount of the pension liabilities of the other JPA members. This is important, because locally, we rely on our police and fire JPAs, as well as other JPAs, to both reduce our costs and increase service to our community. So this would limit our ability to protect our community, and Town Manager Cusomano can expand upon that in a moment. But, like the letter that we brought forward at the last meeting, which is currently being revised by a subcommittee of council, I presume that it would be a similar situation, where you would discuss some of the finer points of this legislation, and then select one or two council members to wordsmith the letter further and bring it back at a later date.
And that's it. We did not really touch this letter at all, because I just, obviously, I think we all feel very strongly about this one, because it touches, it's near and dear to our heart. But it would be helpful, as Rebecca said, if one or two council members were assigned to staff, and the town attorney to craft something. There's a lot of moving parts with this. I know Sloan has been dealing with some of this, too. But this isn't new to us. This is why our consolidation has stalled, and we're looking at other avenues. CalPERS, this language, and CalPERS tried this with us initially, where they said, hey, look, it's, we're going back. It's retro, you know, the joint several language. And so, we negotiated at one point with them, just to move forward. Once it's consolidated, we move forward with that shared liability. And all along, and great advice from our legal counsel to say, be careful, because be careful because they're going to try to pass legislation, and that's exactly what they're doing right now. So it's a big deal. There's some stakeholders meetings coming up with the governor's office. The League of California Cities is very involved, and Teresa's office is actually helping the league as well on this. So we see this as a response letter from the council, but as well as using that letter to follow up with our legal counsel and staff at the state level in some of these hearings to actually testify about this. So this is a big deal, and we're just asking for someone to be assigned to us.
Would you like to do that?
Yes. Can I ask a question about it? Was it the league who provided the draft letter?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I 100% agree with the concept here. I just, these giant form letters are unpersuasive to me.
Yep.
Right, and that's, you're absolutely right because when they do get circulated, they automatically, if there's a two-page, they know it's a boiler.
So I don't mind doing the work. I fully support the concept. I definitely would make it shorter, that's all.
Jim?
My only comment would be where they give the exclusive authority.
Where are you, Jim?
Second page at the bottom. Where they basically are giving CalPERS the exclusive authority to use equity to assign liability. I have a difficulty with that because I believe CalPERS has breached its fiduciary responsibility on numerous items. And I, it just bothers me that they will be determining who gets stuck with a tab. It's basically, CalPERS screws up and us tax donkeys have to pay. And, you know, that's not a polite way to put it, but it, that's where I'm.
Okay.
Well, to that point, to recall, bless you.
Bless you.
That some years back, there was a lot of investments that just went down the tubes at CalPERS.
McFarland lost a billion dollars. We have a board that does not look at the private equity contracts. In fact, they are precluded from looking at them. It's sort of like, you know.
Do we need to take action sometime?
So anyway, I think that Sloan, if you would like to do that, and to work with Todd and Teresa, to make sure that whatever's expressed doesn't give that latitude that all of a sudden CalPERS is going to come back and, you know, want to recover on our backs.
Totally agree. I wonder, timing is the thing. So when I, when you, when we do council reports later, I'll point out that June 1st is the last day for each house to pass bills they've introduced. And then June 15th, well, August 31st is the last day all bills get passed. But if June 1st is our date, when's our next meeting, do you know? So that's, I guess it's, I mean, it feels like it's only two weeks from the time, but I think I got to get this done so that the next meeting we can.
Go for it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Sloan.
So what's the motion exactly? Continue at a date certain?
Can I make a couple comments?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I'd like to see us list some of the other JPAs that we are in because, and I think it's important to point out the serious disruption that this will cause to our ability to provide services to our community that we must provide. Not only police, but water treatment, Central Marin Sanitation.
Mosquitoes.
Is vector control, I don't think, is it a JPA?
I think so.
Yeah, because it's.
Jesus.
It's a something, Marin Sonoma, Sonoma Marin Vector.
Yeah. But not all of those committees are actual JPAs. Okay. And I think, like, just point out the serious disruption, chaos, if you will. And yeah.
That's a good point, Diane.
Use plain language to convey that this will eliminate our ability.
I will, and I don't mind if when I bring it back, you spice it up, it's fine. But I'll do the best I can.
Then I'll try to spice it up.
Okay, and then maybe what we could do on the next agenda is to, if it's still alive, to put 1828. Because 1820, or excuse me, 828, 827 did die. However, 828 is moving along. And sadly, it was approved by Mike McGuire, which was really a little bit of a surprise to me. But it's one of these, if you're not familiar.
It's been great, that's surprising.
You have to provide for 125% over your arena numbers now rather than 200%, that was the big give.
But it still rolls over, right?
But, yeah, but it has to be, yeah, it has to be agendized. So if we could perhaps bring that to the next meeting, that would be helpful. And so then, I think, I don't even know if we need a motion on this. I think just to turn it over.
To continue to a date certain?
Other comment?
Yeah, okay. Any comment, a public comment? Dr. Bundy, do you have anything to say to this?
I'll move that we continue to a date certain?
Okay, yeah, to the next, to the next meeting.
Wait, for this letter?
Okay.
No, no, I'll do a better one. Well, I'll do a different one.
Yeah, okay, so you'll revise the letter?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much, and thanks, Sloan. Okey-dokey.
Do we need to do a second vote or no? We don't need to do that. Okay, got it.
Okay, so we've got that. And we have no sanitary district business. So we're down to council and town manager reports. Mr. Cusamano.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a quick, a few quick updates. I'll leave that to the mayor to give the update on the Intergenerational Center, but Sunday was fun, we had a great time. Tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, we have a community forum here in the council chambers on the flood, our flood control infrastructure. Vice Mayor First is going to help us with the presentation along with Kelly Crowe and Peter Brown. Bob Revazio continues to recuperate, and that's good news. He's improving every day. He tells me that he, when he gets back here in the next couple of weeks, he's going to put an emphasis on bike and pedestrian safety. So he has his quick wit and his humor. But he's doing, he's recovering every day, so we're really excited and happy to hear that. I just wanted to share, we again did a customer service survey in the community for the month of April. We had about 200 respondents, and just basically overall, and I'll give a report later, but we, staff received a really good favorable response from the community. Approximately 88 to 91% of the community says that we're doing a satisfactory to outstanding job with customer service. And it was throughout all levels of our staff. So we'll give you a little breakdown and a summary of that, but it was really helpful to us, and as well as we had a narrative. And so we have about 50 comments. That really helps us. Some constructive criticism that we can do better and hopefully close the gap to, and get it to 100% next year. But I was really, I was really satisfied and happy to see that response. So that's very telling of our staff. And with that, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Sloan, we'll start from your side.
I do. So I represent the town. I sit for the town on the Legislative Committee for the Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers. And there were three bills that we took action on. One of them was AB 1912, which is the one we discussed tonight, the letter that I'll be doing, and strongly oppose. That has to do with the liability for retirement obligations and GPAs. I think that we at the committee referred to it as the death of the JPA bill or something like that, because it really would signal, it would be a terrible thing. Okay, and we supported AB 3162, which is a bill affecting the licensing requirements for drug and alcohol rehabilitation facilities that, to make the proliferation regulated in a way that some communities, in particular San Rafael, for example, will have better control over when licenses are granted and under what circumstances. And then we opposed AB 3121, which is, which would have provided an evidentiary privilege, similar to the attorney-client privilege protection to union agents, which means that they would enjoy protection over discussions they had with their union members about things like negotiating with, for their salaries and what forth. And it was our collective decision that this is, would be an unnecessary protection that would interfere with the normal course of business and would otherwise entrench what are already somewhat difficult negotiations. And that although everybody respects the sort of negotiating and bargaining powers that people can use to better their things, it's not an equivalent sort of public policy as to a doctor-patient or attorney-client or similar of that nature. It just didn't rise related to that. Yeah. So anyway, those are the ones we took action on. On June 1st is the last day for each house to pass bills. June 15th is when our state budget is due by midnight. I don't know what the chances are it's going to pass, but I think quite good, actually. Governor Brown's been doing a reasonably good job there. And then on August 31st is the last day for our legislature to pass bills. I also attended the Marin Clean Energy Monthly Meeting, MCE Clean, Marin Clean Energy, I think so they're called now. Just so you know, that our local renewable energy providing, provider has opened a second office in the East Bay in Concord, because we now have something like 27 member entities. There are nine new member cities just in Contra Costa County. And secondly, we all can take some pleasure in having opened a solar project in Richmond, which is called MCE Solar One, which provides sufficient electricity to power roughly 3,900 homes. It's pretty good. And 341 local jobs. And those are my two reports, thank you.
Thank you, Sloan.
Diane? Thank you. I attended the Transportation Authority of Marin Board Meeting. One of the things we discussed and approved is the expenditure plan for the proposed half-cent sales tax renewal that Transportation Authority of Marin is planning on putting on the November ballot. They will not be increasing the amount. It is an extension of the currently existing tax. It is not due to expire for a few years, but the expenditure plan that's currently in existence was created in 2004, and it's kind of outdated, and we need a little more flexibility and to be able to shift some funds around. One of the areas that I know has come up repeatedly, in fact, we discussed it tonight, is crossing guards. That's gotten more expensive. We'd like to put more money into things like crossing guards. There has been a push by electric vehicle advocates to have more money for EV charging stations. So that was increased, but it was also put in in such a way that it's very flexible. So if the demand isn't there, it can be used for, you know, other alternative fuels or future technologies in other areas. So this new expenditure plan, I think, has more flexibility than the current one, which in my opinion is, is very good. TAM, as you know, has a citizens oversight committee that looks at every penny of their sales tax and reports on that. So there is a watchdog group looking at that. And also, I wanted to announce that Thursday, May 10th, is Bike to Work Day. The Transportation Authority of Marin will be sponsoring an Energizer station with the Marin County Bicycle Coalition. It will be at the base of the Central Marin Ferry Connection Bridge. That's the one that goes over Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, and it kind of lands by a little bike traffic circle, kind of, where the freeway off-ramp comes down, you turn right to head to the ferry or to east Sir Francis Drake.
Those two barn-like buildings there.
Yeah, where California Closets and the Electric Bag Shop, yeah. So if you are going to participate in Bike to Work Day, ride safely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Can I ask you a question? In terms of flexibility, I'm under the impression every, what, five, seven years, the towns in Marin could agree to modify the percentages?
I'm not sure it'll be the towns. It might be the technical advisory committee that gets together to make suggestions, then probably the TAM board. That will likely be in the plan to adjust maybe the percentages or some of the categories. But what I was referring to is, for instance, under the local roads section, it can be for paving or improvements to pathways or new technologies, which could be stoplight, more modern stoplights. It could be synchronized or computerized. Or maybe that could be for EV charging stations or something like that. If it's congestion, you know, reducing technologies, maybe. So even though it says local roads, there are some subcategories that offer a little bit of flexibility in there.
But with the local roads, would it be, you know, Nevada deciding that, okay, they want charging stations, we want bicycle paths?
Well, they get the percentage. So if they want their, of the funds that Nevada gets, if instead of paving roads, they want to put it towards this plan they have for this one particular road that includes all these bells and whistles, they can do that. If we want to put the money towards paving five roads, we can do that.
Okay.
So.
But is that different? So basically, the local funds are, almost a block grant for the individual town?
Local roads tend, the local roads section of that tends to work that way. But again, there's different subcategories. It was, we spent a lot of time discussing that at the TAM Board Meeting, and so it's all on video, plus there's a good staff report if you want to see it.
Okay, I'll have to wade through it.
Jim, your turn.
Okay, I went to the pension meeting. Joe Nation came and talked again. Good and bad news, compared to other people, our town seems to be heading in a better direction. The bad news was that Joe was definitely of the opinion that we should be using a 5% return. And he buttressed it with opinions from Bill Sharp. So it's sort of like, okay, you know, start getting ahead and then we'll get behind again. So anyway, but that's it.
Okay, that's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting today, and they are already, they've met their goal of 50% of the new members that they wanted to acquire this year. They're at the 50% mark. Also, Paul Schiefer, I believe his last name is, from Amy's, came and gave a presentation with new drawings and overview of what they're going to propose at the Planning Commission Meeting. Their golf tournament is going to be in October this year. And in the past, except for this last year when it was at Stone Tree, it's usually at San Geronimo, but that didn't seem to be too practical at that point. So it looks like their golf tournament will be at the Marin Country Club. And it's always a really, really fun affair for those who go. The grand opening celebration of the Intergenerational Center, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, was a real good success. We had good weather. We had food. Marin Pizza came and donated pizzas for the occasion. We had the little buntinis from Nothing Bunt Cake. And Michael Lappert was so generous donating ice cream. And Julie Kritzberger from the Chamber bought, brought, and served all the drinks for the afternoon. So it was really, it was very heartwarming. We felt like, you know, we did it. Now we just have to get people to come to the classes. So anyways, if we can, Rebecca, I can send you little things that you can put out to keep the word going out there. But things were good. Like I said yesterday, we had the art and drawing, which was really fun. Today was 3D printing and chair yoga. And tomorrow is the drawing again. Oh, yesterday was H-Song also, and tune time. So there's just a whole vast amount of programs that are being offered, and we will be adding more as soon as we have the space. But we're already running out of space. So if you haven't been able to come by, do drop by and see it. Diane, thank you for coming. And Todd, oh, if you haven't seen the bench out in front, which is our logo, it is just. And Todd, oh, if you haven't seen the bench out in front, which is our logo, it is just not to be missed. And Todd's father, Gary, made it, and it is incredible. And long after the event was over on Sunday, people would, I guess they were going to Cafe Verde, and people were trooping over, taking pictures of the bench, having their kids sit on the bench. I mean, it was really, really a kick. And it was just, it felt so good on Monday that the bench was still there. And today, the bench was still there. And so, I mean-
It's bolted.
It's stuck into concrete, but you know, this thing is really tempting. You know, it would look good anywhere. So it was just really, really exciting. And-
How many generations of Cusmanos were there?
Three.
Yeah.
Three. And so it was, it is the Cusmano family bench officially.
All right.
So.
Yes. I just wanted to add a sincere thank you to you and all the folks that have worked so hard with you to create the Intergenerational Center and age-friendly. It really is an amazing community asset that will be enjoyed for a very long time by many, many people. You should be very proud of what you've been able to accomplish, and I'm so glad there was a great turnout, and everybody could see just how beautiful it is, and wish you all the luck with that.
Oh, Diane, thank you. And you know what? It isn't me. It's, as my husband always says, there's no I in team. That isn't the way it goes. What is it? There's-
Sure.
Is that the way it goes?
Except they're not here, you are.
And, but no, and it wouldn't have happened if it weren't for the council.
Yes, okay, Carla.
It wouldn't have happened if it weren't-
I would just say, you're welcome.
For the council.
I'd throw you all a pat on the back.
No, I mean, we could have done it without you guys approving and giving us the go-ahead, and with Todd just supporting us all the way. And so it's, it's there. It's still in progress. We're still not completely done, but it's a work in progress, and it'll be finished soon. And so I thank you all. Anything else for this evening?
No.
No? Okay, then.
Look at the agenda.
Oh.
Take it back. Roll it back.
I'm rolling it back. I'm rolling it back. Okay. Draft agenda.
The only addition to the draft agenda is we will be, we'll be adding the audit, the financial audit. We'll be on the next agenda.
Okay. Super. And 828, please.
Yes.
Now is everybody ready?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The meeting is adjourned.